All right. Good evening. This is the March 16th, 2023. Combined Select Board meeting in Lakeville with the Finance Committee. This is the third budget meeting. I will let the Finance Committee open their meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So yes, today is the March 16th meeting of the Finance Committee. Tonight, we have all members present. I'm Mr. Rush, Monica, Oscar, Dave, Ian, Rich.
All right. So tonight, we have IT Veterans, Library Park Cemetery Commission, and Town Administrator's Office. So I guess first is the IT Department.
Page 28.
Page 28. All right. Hello.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So we've been going through a lot of the... We know it's pretty much a level services budget, straight across the board. This doesn't apply to you, but I do know that we've seen mostly the increases in fuel and trash removal. But so that doesn't apply to you. So if you just want to run down a couple of these things for us, that would be great.
Yeah. I think for the most part, as you say, we are pretty level. We do have some minor increases in some services that are being provided, some maintenance agreements. And we are in a... We set up a plan last year where we are revolving, replacing equipment every year as opposed to having to replace everything at once. So it was a minor increase in budgeting for that. As we have seen hardware costs go up, PCs have gotten a little bit more expensive. Some of the maintenance agreements actually have gone down. We've been able to reduce some of that. It's really been pretty much just some professional services and some of the contracts have gone up a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, so right off the bat, we see that 13.9% increase at the bottom for IT equipment replacement. Otherwise, does anyone on the Finance Committee have a question?
The IT equipment replacements have primary endpoints, or you guys?
It's... We're replacing PCs. That are revolving process where we're trying to replace a certain number of PCs every year, so we're not faced with replacing everything all at once. And we do, as we did replace some switches, we have an ongoing process to replace some of the network infrastructure, so we're not faced with, again, with having to do everything at once.
But you have a rotation also like every three years?
Yeah, we're trying to do everything like every four years to replace all the hardware, so we're keep thinking things roll out. Everything was replaced just prior to my arrival, when everything was upgraded to newer hardware to support Windows 10. So it was a pretty major rollout. And that time right around the beginning of COVID, but so I'm trying to kind of control that a little bit better and make that a more sustainable process.
The software licensing? Can you clarify what some of those agreements entail?
Yeah, it's a... A lot of it is the town is using Microsoft 365 for emails, so we have licensing costs for emails. We have licensing for the backup services, both for the software that is used to back the servers up to internal storage. And then we actually then copy everything off to a colo site. So there is some cost to maintain that colo site and maintain the backups.
You're not using Azure services, or is there any plans to move to Azure?
I'd like to do that at some point. We're using right now, we're using Azure AD Sync, so we are syncing the act... Some of the Active Directory off, but we're not using the full.
Are you still running on-prem service?
Still running on-prem Active Directory and on-prem some on-prem service.
Is there a capital plan? I didn't see anything for that.
Probably note this, yeah. We took a break on the capital probation this year. We talked about the proposed budget because there's still a good amount of money left over. So we think we take a break and do it again in 25. So similar to what Bob's talking about, are things going to handle a capital plan? The servers, that kind of thing.
To obsolete those servers and move to Azure? Okay.
Anyone else?
Thanks. Say, hi Bob.
Hi, how are you?
Good to see you again. It's nice to see that some of the plans you started out a couple of years ago are still working well, so appreciate that. I was actually surprised to see some costs go down. That's always nice. So 1% increase across the board is actually less than I was expecting to see. Now, maintenance agreements, that bundles a lot of stuff. Police station and other... Police department and other things. Do we know if any of the larger contracts are coming up for renewal sometime soon? Or is that still just like PAMIT or something else? There's a couple of biggies in there.
Yeah, there is this kind of an ongoing thing with PAMIT there. Actually, there's a migration process to move that to another system called Mark 43, which has really been kind of in flux, that whole process is... The Mark 43 software is really not customized for the way New England works. And they've been having all kinds of issues just making it work the way that they want to. The software people that were running PAMIT actually have taken over maintenance on that now. So we actually do have a sustained contract.
Oh, nice.
And so the police chief will have to make a decision as to whether we just continue that road or continue down the road with the Mark 43 migration.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Okay, anyone else Finance Committee? Rich?
I'd just like to say, Bob, that since you... Brian knows too, that, you know, since you took over the IT, you have made significant progress in stabilizing our environment, you know, especially networks and servers. Very little downtime now, downtime now. So you've done a terrific job, you know, updating everything and keeping updated, thanks.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a... Probably more of a capital thing. I know we have our little server room. How much longer is that to be non-issue? Because I know that every now and again, there's, you know, problem because of the ventilation or...
There's going to be some issues there.
Yeah, it's a... I mean, most of the equipment that we actually moved here to the police station, we have a pretty decent server room here. There are a couple of things still running at Town Hall. We do still have an issue there with HVAC at the Town Hall, where that room just wasn't designed to host anything putting out heat. There's actually, there's a radiator in that room, so when the heat goes on at Town Hall, there's pipes going through trying to heat that room while the HVAC is trying to cool it. I do want to get pretty much everything out of there if I can. There's a couple more systems I would like to move from Town Hall to the police station and really just have that server room be the minimal amount to support the switches and the infrastructure for the Town Hall.
And how can we help implement that plan?
It's basically, I've been replacing things and stabilizing things out the last year. I haven't wanted to replace hardware and then move things at the same time. I wanted to make sure I just change one thing at a time.
Sure.
So I'm at a point now where I'm probably pretty close to being able to say, let's start to move things. I've talked to TMLP about moving the internet connection from Town Hall to the police station, at which point I can move the firewalls and I can move everything here and get that equipment out. There's a couple of old servers that are still running, which I can actually move. They're up for replacement in this budget. And I will move those here, so we'll get that equipment out.
Okay, great.
And I do want to get a redundant internet. One of the things we have had an issue with is if TMLP goes down, there are a single point of failure at the moment. And so I have been talking to Comcast and Verizon FiOS about getting a second connection in. We did put redundant firewalls in. So we've got two pieces of hardware. If one of the firewalls fails, the other one automatically takes over. I want to also add to that, having the two internet connections. So if one of them goes down, it goes over to the other one.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any more questions on that? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Will and Veterans.
Page 60.
Hello.
Hi.
Where are you?
I'm June 8th.
Good. So what do we have here?
Reponderance of this budget is either low salary or the veterans' benefits.
Okay.
You'll note that we put a small increase to veterans' benefits, about $3,000 to the main line. That tracks with the cherry sheets. Cherry sheets have an increase of about $3,000 as well, from 23 to 24.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Really, it's 1.2%.
And really, the only drive for that lottery is really the veterans' benefits. That is a program that's fun, that's basically a mandate. And the... There's a rate of reimbursement from the state. They reimburse us for the majority of the funds, but there's a local share. But we spend about $160,000 a year and get about $95,000, $97,000 in reimbursement.
It's all worth it. DVS has informed us that they're going to be having an 8.7% increase for 2024, but I've stayed underneath of that, so.
The governor's budget didn't show that yet anyway, so I'll see that later on. If we need to address, we can.
Looks pretty straightforward to me. Is there any... You need more from the town for our vets?
Well, I am going to need some more flag holders. I'm down to the last two.
Two?
Two.
These are the flag holders that we...
Which is what, yes, yes.
We were just commenting, these used to be made of that. They used to be made of brass.
Yeah, right. And when they were made of brass, they were stolen.
So...
Yeah, yeah. You know, people just, they go and get the plastic and they say, "Well, I'm not going to get anything for this," and they don't steal. And even the brass ones really weren't brass. They were like, which is worth about the same amount as brass, by the way.
So if I can... I know I was approached at one of our memorial services that there's a dire need for, you know, these grave markers. And so I've been working with Will and Joan Morton, you know, to kind of get a better handle on what we were looking at. So Joan was... Joan was nice enough to drop this off at Town Hall for me so that I could present it here this evening so that everybody can have an idea of what we're looking at. So from what I can tell, it's about $14 each. And they are looking for about 200 because they need to replace some of the ones that have been missing as well as any new markers that they need to place at the grave sites. So to me, this is one of those inventory items that we should never, you know, have depleted. So I wanted to make sure that we got that information here. So if, you know, you do the math, you're looking at a little over $2,000. I mentioned it to, you know, to Ari to see if there was some way that whether it went under Veterans or the Cemetery Commission's, you know, budget. I'm not quite sure where this would fall or... But we do really need to secure these items.
Well, DVS goes and reimburses for flags, but they don't reimburse the flag holders, so.
Yeah, and this wasn't requested during the budget process, but if the Board desires to add it in, you know, $2,000 isn't going to make a bunch of a difference either way.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
He said this...
I said, "It wasn't requested during the budget process, but if the Board decides that they want to defund this and add $2,000, it's not going to make a big difference either way in terms of the budget."
Is this something that we could utilize in donation funds for, or?
Um, which donation funds?
I'm not sure which, I mean, we get donations.
I guess we could talk about that outside of the budget process. I'm not sure what donations we would be talking about.
You know, I mean, for, I guess for, you know, purposes of moving this along, I can just kind of circle back with you and, you know, maybe we can just present it to the Board of how we're going to fund this.
Yeah.
I make a motion we add the $2,000 to the veterans' expense account for these.
So in this budget?
In this budget.
Yeah, I'll second that motion, Rich. I think that we should, like you said, Lorraine, we should have them on hand and I'd like the money to be there in case, you know, in the middle of the year, whatever happens, you'll not have to wait to buy 200. You can buy whatever you need so that you don't have a low supply.
You know, the quantity, prices go down like everything else.
Yeah, but, okay. Any more discussion on that? So just on that particular vote to add these in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Make sure I can send that.
All right. Anything else? Anybody?
I was just going to ask if these are something anybody could buy to donate to you, or do you have to be registered?
Oh, no, anybody could buy it. Yeah, sure. It's just, you know, the lower quantity that you get, the more expensive they're going to be. When I had Halifax and Lakeville, I put the both together and of course that made things quite a bit cheaper. Lasted for quite a few years, that one. They're running out.
Yeah, actually, I noticed one because it's two different prices. One's on the inside for $9.95. Is it just quantity issue?
That's probably, yeah, that's probably the quantity issue. Probably for like a thousand.
All right. Well, it's in there. If something changes before the final vote, we can take it out. But if not, it's in there and you, you know, can buy them as you need them. Or...
Well, I'd get like two, 200.
Yes. Yep. Okay. No other questions? Anybody? All right. Thank you. Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Brian.
One minor question. I was just surprised, no increase in the veterans' benefits for fuel, given the cost of fuel the last year? Or is that something?
Well, I did have it, but it got changed out, so.
The year-to-date is... I'll put that here. I have a fuel line.
It's a last one.
Oh, I see now. The veterans' benefits for fuel. That's part of the total. So that combined with the ordinary medical, or what drives the... Or what the state funding drives off of.
Okay.
So it all depends on their cake load and everything else, but the rate of reimbursement that we get, the state drives the amount that we put out.
And one thing I'd like to add. In the past, I've brought in what the VA is paying per Z code. And they only do that about every three years. And with the PAC Act, we will be seeing a major increase because of the laws that have passed with that. As of January, a whole bunch of people who were denied before are now going to get paid. And that's going to bring money into the people in the town, so.
Also, Brian, probably worth noting that they've spent in the fuel line about $20,000 so far this year.
That's really a 20-year so far.
Yeah.
All right.
Guys are always easy.
Maybe you're just that good.
Well, you see anticipation.
Yeah. All right. Next, we have Jamie and the library.
Page 62.
Hi.
Hi, Jamie.
So I'm here for the library, but there's also the chair of my Board of Trustees, Patrick Marshall, is here. He can come up if he wants.
No, he's... It's okay.
I guess, just like everybody else, really, this budget is only contractual obligations and cost of living increase represented the expense lines. I actually did some significant cut in this year to try to balance the bottom line. So overall, our increase is only 2.2% over last year. The increases are just like everyone else's. It's really just fuel and trash, or the lines that increased. Anywhere that I could decrease, I did. And that was taking into account kind of historical spending. So looking at where we've really been for actual costs and doing some adjusting there. So this is really what we will need for fiscal year '24. It does meet the requirements that we have to meet for the state in terms of the municipal appropriation requirement. The 2.2% does get us there, so there's no concern about losing certification as far as the state is concerned. Certification allows us to borrow from other communities, so Lakeville residents can go to other area libraries. We can pull in materials from other libraries that won't be in any jeopardy, so.
That is a real concern too. I've been through it before. I had to go to a state and we'll see if anyone wants to beg forgiveness from out of the Bedford because we went through a budget process period, so it's challenging.
We've been fortunate here in Lakeville to hold where we need to be. I'm always mindful of trying to keep that to the place where we meet that requirement, but we're not exceeding it so far that... Because what happens is it's based on an average, so every increase, you have to keep going. The intent is really just that library services will continue to grow, but generally for us here in Lakeville, the salary increases cover that cost. I guess the one thing I would want to, I guess I have good news, is that we're finally back to like pre-COVID numbers in terms of circulation. And we actually beat our 2019 numbers as far as people coming in and borrowing materials. So that's good. So we're back to business as usual for folks to come back. And one thing you'll notice too, as part of this budget, is there's no money for programming. So all of those activities that we do, the Friends of the Library support those activities. We also seek other grant funds or use state aid to cover the costs of that. So there's no cost to the town or the taxpayer for all of the programming that we do. We seek other sources for that. The budget here really supports the staff in terms of salaries and the facility in terms of the expenses and does cover cost of materials. We still use a portion of the money that we get for the state aid to public libraries. So part of meeting this requirement also means that we get grant funds from the state and we use a significant portion of that to help make up the difference for what we need to spend on materials. We are required to spend 16% of our total appropriation on materials. What we ask for from the town isn't quite that, but we make up the difference with state aid funding. So we... You meet the base requirement, we get the state funding, we use some of it to cover materials. I don't know if there were any questions.
I'll ask the, why is there a 54% drop in buildings and grounds?
We typically serviced out to have grounds work done and the Highway Department has been wonderful to be coming by and taking care of that for the last few years. We used to have to service it out because we didn't have staff for it and they have been coming and taking care of that. So I'm looking at the historical spending for that line. It's like we... What we are asking for is what we typically need to run the facility itself itself, excluding the grounds, because the grounds work at this point has been covered elsewhere.
Year-to-date in that, Madam Chair, is $1,073.
How much is it?
$1,073 year-to-date.
Oh, okay.
His room, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Finance Committee, Brian?
I just want to say, glad to hear your numbers are back to pre-COVID. That's great. I think, please correct me if I state this correctly, but I think we've shared before that when economic times get bad, you see desire for services going up. Do you think that's part of why the number's going up? And do you feel you have everything you need to meet the demand that's coming in?
It's probably too soon to tell if it's just that people are getting back to their regular business, because we definitely are seeing more foot traffic, more people using the building as, we'll call it like a secondary workspace and study spaces and tutors, like those things are back. I probably won't know until this time next year whether or not the increase is in relation to the economy. It's a little skewed because we had the two years where people were kind of staying away because of COVID that I don't know, like if the bump is because of the economy or just people back to normal. We'll see a trend in that probably over the next couple of years. Yeah.
Thank you.
But as far as supporting it, I think as long as we have the budget that we need to run in terms of staffing and expenses, we should be able to accommodate increased use.
Great.
The hourly wages for clerks and custodians. Can you clarify those increases, the seven and eight percent?
Those are step increases. So I have three part-time clerks that are on step increases. I have three full-time staff. I had a couple of retirements a couple of years ago. So all of the new staff are still in the step place. The youth services librarian, she's already at the top step, so that one was negotiated higher. But the seven and eight is really because I still have people moving through the steps. I think at this point, the custodian is at the top step. The 7% line, they may only have one more, one more jump next year to make top step.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, that question. Jamie, I see on the capital plan, your replacement a couple of years ago, yeah, whatever. I don't see any other needs in your budget or in the capital plan for the library. Is there any foreseeable improvements that we have to make or things that need to be addressed and fixed?
Well, we recently had the thermal audit done, so that's, I think, going to cover some lights that will be... There's going to be grant funding for that. We did discuss the HVAC system, but I think at this point, it's still undetermined what the course of action for that would be, whether or not it's replacing the existing equipment in the way that it is or if we would look at alternative options for less expensive, more efficient units, whether or not there would be grant funding. So there's nothing in the capital because it's still undetermined what the course of action would be. So those systems as of right now are functional, but you're right. They're... The building now is, let's see, 18 years old? No, 17. Yeah, it'll be 18 in September. So it's, those systems are starting to get to their end of life. So we've started those conversations, but there's nothing really... I think about something I worked with Paul, Neon, about... We've started that conversation. The roof was already an issue because we have locations where we can see we've got water problems already. There's nothing, you know, pouring into the building, but you can see spots where it's probably getting up under the shingles, making its way in somewhere. So that's part of why that's on there already. But the other systems will have to be looked at. And then other improvements, I think we would probably do if they're more to enhance services or redesign the way that the collection is laid out or things like carpeting, we may consider doing that more with grant funding and gifts to do facelift type things.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Don't believe Parks Commission's here yet.
Yeah, we don't see anyone here yet from Parks. So I guess Emory will take care of cemetery next.
Page 56.
What do you think?
I'm not seeing a need to increase our budgets from the last past years. I think we could stay the same. We can get by on that. Currently, we have less than $10,000 in our account and we have several projects we have to do. One being, it looks like we're going to get stuck taking down the trees that are endangering Clark Cemetery. And that's $2,500 or $3,000 there. And we've been working hard to properly restore a table stone monument at Thompson Hill Cemetery and sourcing brownstone to make new legs for it. And the person is Phoebe Turner, buried there in 1818. And we want to restore it to the way it was so that, you know, we can get that cemetery on historic register. And that's going to be quite costly. Also, we need to paint railings all over, you know, the iron railings that go between the granite posts. They're all rusty and we need to get those painted. And our other item is the Ward Cemetery is absolutely deplorable. And our other item is the Ward Cemetery is absolutely deplorable condition. There's broken stones everywhere, there's a homemade ugly fence, pieces of granite and iron rods are just scattered around. It needs a lot of work. So we need every penny we have now, but I don't think we need an increase for next year.
Okay. How do you propose that? I mean, I know DPW maintains, but it seems, it sounds like it's a little more work than just maintenance there.
Taking down the, what do you?
The Ward Cemetery.
Ward Cemetery, I, a lot of the marble monuments are broken in half, and I think there's a way to epoxy them back together, and they should be, once they're tipped, should be tipped back up. I'd like to see a decent railing there. I mean, that homemade fence that's there is just ugly. At the very least, painted.
Yeah.
And it's just a mess. It needs a lot of cleaning up.
If I may, where is the Ward Cemetery?
You can't find it.
That's probably why I don't know where it is?
Yeah.
You have to head for Willie Shovell's house.
Okay, well, I don't know, but that's okay.
Okay, off, the Wilkie.
Okay, I know where that is.
You go up Crookland Lane, and you go up towards the house that's on the hill.
Yep.
And you take a left.
Yep.
And that brings you up to the Ward Cemetery. So it's pretty well hidden. I don't know how often people go there, but it's, I think probably because it's hidden, it's why it's in such bad shape.
Yeah, there is definitely a few of them that are off the beaten path, like there isn't a proper road to them.
Absolutely.
Yep. And a few people that you have to go through their yards aren't always happy to let you, so I suggest if anyone wants to go see some of these, to either reach out to Emory or Kenupham to go with a chaperone, because in some cases, you're going in people's yards and they don't always like that.
Isn't there, wasn't there improvement designs for that?
Well. Isn't there a really old cemetery off of Pickens Street where the state, it's not a state forest, but there's some kind of a state, I know that with a walking trail, it's where the old Pickens Street used to?
Well, there is, I forget the name of the cemetery, there is a cemetery on Pickens Street. And then if you go down by what used to be the boy store.
Yep.
Scout property, across the street, deep in the woods, there's a cemetery.
And that's on your radar as well, isn't it?
Pardon?
That's on your radar as well, the cemetery?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay. I just remember seeing that many, 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 many years ago, so.
Yeah.
I didn't know if maybe that was the Ward one, but it was.
We've got like 32 cemeteries in town.
I don't really, I don't see, and if it's in here, I missed it, but like a little narrative on the cemetery?
Because the budget's part of Public Works' budget.
Okay, because I know that even as of, I think, last year, we have plenty of plots right now.
Yes, we do.
We don't need to take anything by eminent domain for, you know, we're in really good.
Not at all.
Yep, shape for that. So I don't think there's anything else that would be pressing other than I know the cemetery's commission desire to try to get at least a couple of these cemeteries in the historic register.
Absolutely.
Have you had any success locating the?
I found a company in Connecticut that will manufacture legs out of brownstone. They originally were brownstone, so that's what we want to replace it with.
Okay, question?
I was just gonna ask, do we have an idea how much that would be?
Well, I was quoted $195 per leg. We need six legs, and then we'll need a mason to put it all together and transportation, get it here from Connecticut.
Sounds reasonable given the head goal.
I'd say four or five thousand is where we're going to end up on that project.
Does that leave enough for other projects within your budget?
Well, yeah, and we got the trees and then we'll have to just, we've been very frugal, so we'll have to continue to be as frugal as possible.
Okay. Yep?
One question if I may. It was actually related to the Thompson Cemetery post. I know that we've got $50,000 for 2025. Is there any chance somebody would find even a few of those earlier? Are you pretty confident that they're simply unavailable until another year from now?
The last, we couldn't find them in the gray granite. They had brown granite, and we wanted it to look like the old ones, so I don't think they're going to be available now. It's very hard to find those granite posts. There's a few around.
It's like, my only thought was whether the select board would prefer to pull that in or partially pull that in, just in the event that suddenly somebody kicks over a piece of plywood and finds some, and then you can get your hands on it without worrying.
I mean, if the board wanted, we could put it in the fall, in the fall, '24 is fall. That'd probably, it's, I mean, six of one does any other in terms of the funding source.
Yeah. Just a thought.
Okay. Any other, Rich?
You have a question. I know that we talked about this a couple of years ago, that, you know, all the trust funds that we have available for the cemeteries, and I wish Todd was here, you know, to ask this question, but he's not. I think some of those funds are available to make some of the improvements for some of these cemeteries. I think it'd be worth looking into that.
Okay, I wasn't aware of it.
So the treasurer has the detail of all the cemeteries and, you know, I forget what they call it, when you sell a grave, you get how much, you get a percentage to be put in for maintenance.
Yeah, $300 for perpetual maintenance.
Thank you. So that has been building up over the years, including any interest in those accounts. I think it'd be worth looking into to have the cemetery commission meet with Todd and meet with the treasurer, to go over those funds or see if some of those funds are available to do some of these things that, you know, you're talking about.
That would be great, yeah.
Because I know there is money available. I don't know how much, but there is money available.
That would be great.
Just for, just general knowledge, what is the current price for a plot, including perpetual care?
It's $800 for the plot, $1,000 to open the grave, $300 for perpetual care, and then there's a $50 filing fee.
And that's all plot, whether it's a full body cremation, doesn't matter as far as?
No, the only difference in price would be cremation, it doesn't cost as much to take a hold, it doesn't have to be as big.
Just to follow up on that question, the perpetual care, do you know if that all goes into one fund or is it separate by cemetery?
I think it goes into one fund.
Okay. So that may be an opportunity to use some of those funds to fix some of these cemeteries. Since the Highway Department pays for taking care of the graves and cutting the grass and doing all that stuff, you don't have that expense, that's in the Highway's budget.
Right.
Anyway, just an idea.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay. Anybody else? No? All right. Can't hurry.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
I do think Scott, did Scott walk in?
No.
Oh, there he is. You're next.
Page 69. So before Scott starts, I'm sure the board would be interested in knowing what the revenue's looking like in this fund right now.
Yes.
Yeah, so they're running pretty good. They're at, for FY '23, they've recovered, they've recovered a number of about $170,000, about 79% of their revenue for the year, except before the spring kicks in, so, you know, they're probably in reasonably good shape to be at or near their budgeted amount.
Would the, do we have any historical information that suggests that the spring gives you like another bump as other things kick in?
Sure, that would be the spring fees. That'll be somewhere in the ballpark. What are we at now for fees? Let's see. I want to, I want to say it's probably $20,000 in the spring for fees, which is our biggest time.
Fees are kind of burying here.
Let's see. Now there is a line for other field rentals. Yeah, so we're at 14 now and we're projected for 38, so, you know, probably another 20, 20,000 plus. Plus you get the first, the first week of clear pond, which is probably the biggest week for the season passes. So.
So two year, I'm pretty close to budget. And that doesn't even count Boston Tavern rentals between now and then, so they'll be over budget probably.
Let's hope so. It'll be nice. Been a while.
Do you have Boston Tavern numbers? Do we have those?
I do.
Yep, I have the.
I have it separated. You want to do it or me do it? I got it separated out if you want me to. Go ahead. So for FY '23, Boston Tavern revenue is budgeted at 115,000. They've recovered about $83,900 to date, or received, recovered, received. The '24 budget's actually a little lower, it's 112, just to be safe. The '22 actual, which was really the first year, full year of Boston Tavern, was about 92.8. If you recall, the percentage fee goes up year by year. Year one was 12%, year two is 14%, year three it's 15 or 16%. So, I'm 16.
Right, and I increased it a little bit, another 5 or 10%. We talked with Heather and she said that the bookings were much higher than last year.
There's probably some upside risk in this number, which is good.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's, the 115, was that what percent? Was that 12-ish?
That'll be year two, so year 14%.
This year will be a 15%.
Right, 15, I'm sorry, yeah. I keep hearing it's 15 or 16.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I have a contract in front of me.
Can they add in their second or third year of the contract?
They come to, right, March, next March?
Third year starts this month. So we're just starting with the third year.
Correct.
16% third year.
16%, okay, good, even better.
So that means we need to start looking at that contract probably?
Yep, a few months will need to start doing that.
August, September, maybe?
Yep.
Okay.
I guess my question is going to be, when they proposed this, their second year revenue proposal was 1.2 million, their third year revenue proposal was 1.5 million. So are they confident they're going to get closer to the numbers that they proposed originally?
I'll be recording that, but 1.5 million would mean, 60% of 1.5 million, that would be, that would be getting 240,000.
We're not in cost of that.
I seriously doubt we'll get 240,000.
It'll be nice.
We have a good year, maybe we'll get 150,000 next year, maybe, maybe, if things really take off and do well, 16%, but we're not budgeting for that.
Right.
Maybe there's some potential upside there, but 240.
Yeah, no, the last year we were even close to that, was back before COVID. We were averaging about 108.
Yeah.
Because their proposal was in calendar 2021, they said 300K the first year, 1.2 million the second year, 1.5 million the third year, so it might be an interesting conversation to say, what changed?
There are a number of things I have to take, you know, there are a number of things, there's some adjustments we've made to sort of makeshift that need to be codified in the contract. For example, they've utilized that location to do an awful lot of cooking and developments, so their utility costs are astronomical. We have been keeping up to date with that, and we're using the aspects of the contract that allow us to bill them back for utility expenses, so we're getting some money back.
Right, but it's just taking.
It takes a little while.
We took a beating this year on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Now we're going to get more.
Right, a little more. So, yeah, the spike happened this year, yeah, it really is. So it's, there's some things we're going to need to look into that contract from a recovery standpoint. I think they're very happy with the project, I think they've been very satisfied with it for themselves, but yeah, there's some things we need to have covered.
I'd like to offer that, right around that time when they were talking about reopening, the talk was reopening and not shutting back down again, so that could have been, I still think the numbers are high, and I know you said that when we were looking at it, but remember we reopened and then we shut back down again and masks became mandatory again and whatever, so maybe, you know, that number will be a little different. Maybe that could be one reason why.
Yeah, and one thing I'll say, just, you know, I may be saying the obvious, but from a revenue standpoint for this fund, that the operation of that lodge is absolutely crucial. Total revenue in that fund, about half of it right now is coming from Boston Tavern, from Luteby Lodge.
Yep.
So whatever we do, we need to keep working that, build the resource and so forth, and also maintain, you know, if not that relationship, develop a relationship that'll allow us to have a contractor that provides the funding, the revenue we need. Their revenue is essential to that, to continue the fund.
Okay.
So while we're talking about Boston Tavern, Scott, I hear good things about what they're doing. Is the Park Commission happy with what they're doing over there?
Yeah, I mean, we have very little interface with them.
No, but you haven't heard any complaints, like, you know?
Oh, you mean of what they're doing? No, no, I haven't. You know, I mean, maybe one disruptive person, but I mean, out of all the events they've had, if it's just one, it's fantastic.
They seem to do a good job.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, they've been very town-friendly, too. I mean, I know when I was trying to schedule some things for the APC, they were, you know, that's things they're not getting paid for, and they were extremely helpful with, you know, chair setup and this and that, so, you know, that's what we wanted, too, was someone that we could work with that would, you know, help us with that kind of stuff when the actual town needs to use the facility, so.
They've been very, they've been very bipartisan. We had a little bit of trouble, issues early on with the liquor license and that kind of thing, getting that all worked through, but now that, now that's happened, things are generally working pretty smoothly.
Yep.
Yeah, we're happy all the senior luncheons are back over there, so that's nice, so.
Good.
That was a lot of cabbage on Tuesday.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, I guess the only issue was the, was the triathlon. I mean, it's our biggest, it's our biggest single event, and then we only received half the money, and we didn't know why, and I still.
Boston Tavern's statement is that they have, is that the issue has to do, well, they said there's some discussions that predate me, that the issue has to do with the, I guess they don't, I guess the triathlon doesn't do, doesn't do a normal buy in terms of food and things like that?
They had a dinner there. They had a dinner there at the end of the triathlon, which they, it was a chicken dinner, and they got, they got that event. I mean, during the morning, they're not running events when the triathlon there.
One thing that Tim Malinowski told me was that there used to be three events that were kind of troublesome this way for them from a revenue standpoint. The triathlon's the only one left, only one now, so that's, but we can have some further discussions about that, especially as we get to the contract.
Yeah. It was just a surprise hit for $2,400. You know, I'm scraping to find every dollar I can.
Yep. All right, so let's go to the budget here. So for everyone at home, the Parks Department, the Parks is an enterprise fund, so that means you kind of operate independently from the actual town budget, so you have your own kind of funding here. So, I mean, there's, you know, an increase 9.5%, which, again, the labor's contract, whatever, so I think a lot of this is sitting in payroll.
What's that, where?
In the wages.
Yeah.
That's a little high, but I don't know if you want to give us any kind of a?
They also increased the lifeguard.
Yep.
That was a big increase.
Yeah.
Huge increase last year.
It's just that there's, you know, like a lot of big numbers, 75%, 46% up, down. So it just, you know, it evens, it balances out to a 6.9% increase in, you know, that whole expenses, but I don't know if you have any information you can give us.
I would say that Scott and Todd did a lot of work together to kind of just get the revenue to go based on the actuals.
Right, I mean, the last time I was the chairman, I wanted very badly to change the chart of accounts, and I even proposed the chart of accounts to, so we could split these expenses and this income so that we can see where the expenses are going. I mean, right now repairs and maintenance is John Pond, Ted Williams, the lodge, you know, it's, it's, it's all of them, you know, and it's, so it's tough to pinpoint, you know, where we're spending money, you know, without going through every line item. So this year I tried to, in, in the budget that I proposed, I, I split it. I split the expenses, I split the income. I don't know if you have that. I mean, I do, but for me, as an accountant, you know, I, I need to know where things are going and where the money's coming from. So, so what is, what is, most, most of it is in the wage category? I mean, I went up, I mean, I, I did these, the wage category before the personnel paperwork came out, so I mean, I did a general 5% increase because I had heard there was going to be possibly a 3% increase, so I said, well, I'm not going to be short. So, I mean, I did generally across the board. As far as Ryan and, and that, that is what it is. I have no control over that. Which is the biggest number.
Yep, so that does reflect a 5%, not whatever.
Because I didn't have the, the.
The actual.
I didn't have the, the rate increase at the time when I did it. So I did a roughly a 5% increase. Because we had had a, a big increase last year. But you, you can't even go from there because the year before was 21 when we were closed. So.
Yeah.
As far as Clear Pond, the guards and the, the guards and the auxiliary staff and the director.
Generally speaking, most of the staff is all just reflective of what the actuals were looking like and what we need to have there.
Right.
I think there's some assumptions as far as the director goes because you guys wanted to move to hire, but yeah.
Yep.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on that part of the top part?
On the payroll part?
Yeah.
I do.
Okay.
So, and maybe I missed it. So it's a 59% increase, so that's more than a 5% increase. Did you hire more people?
No, what 59%?
He's talking about the, he's talking about the guards.
The guards.
Because he has.
Did you hire more lifeguards or is this more than a 5% increase?
They didn't increase the pay.
Scott, if you remember, we paid those bonuses too.
Right.
Because we couldn't get, we couldn't get lifeguards. And the, actually the board, you know, voted to do that because at first we didn't get any. And then we, I forget, I don't even remember the amount.
This is not fully reflected in '23 because we did it after.
And so that's probably one of the reasons why it's higher, higher. And, and also, I think if I'm not mistaken, we bumped up the, the way, the, the guards' hourly wage, if I'm not mistaken, to Scott.
Yeah, because.
We couldn't get anybody.
And, and it's a state problem. It's, it's not just here.
So hopefully you've already advertised for that.
If it's helpful to note, the, the year-to-date right now in the guards, line for '23 is about $30,000. It was just, it's just, it's just that the, the change happened after the budget was adopted.
Correct, that's what happened to last year's. That's why last year's was completely out of whack.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, you can't have guards there by themselves either.
No, I understood, I just, I saw there's a 59% increase. I was just wondering how to get to that number.
But I'm, I'm, where's the 59% increase?
It says hourly wages for guards. You don't see the same one we do, I guess. Here's the details.
Scott, you have mine.
It's the third one down from the top.
Yes, right. Yep.
What is the hourly salary for these lifeguards now? The 59% increase, no staff, they're paying them $25 an hour.
No, no, they're not getting that, but they did, they did get an increase last year because we couldn't get any guards.
The signing bonus was the big thing.
We have to do the same in that poison.
I understand.
I'm just wondering about a part-time job, that's all.
Yeah, no.
We can bring it back to you, that's, that's no problem.
You want to be a part-time lifeguard?
Hey, we will.
Oh, from the 22 actuals?
I'll scare away everybody, yeah, whatever.
I think it's because we don't have the fine, what changed in 2023 when you guys added this? So this probably reflects whatever it was initially in '23, but not that, so it looks like a bigger jump than what it actually was.
What are we today?
30,000. So it's, it was, yeah, we're at 30,000 and change right now. 37,000, oh, three, seven. That's fine, I'll, we'll, we'll bring back that information too.
I was, I was just going to ask if that 31,000, does that put us in a competitive space against state parks and such to get people?
I hope so. I mean, we, we barely, we barely had enough last year. I'm hoping, you know, that we're, we're in the process of deciding on a director. I've been talking with HR as to who we have applied. You know, if we have the same gentleman back, possibly. He has a good rapport with the, with the kids and, you know, being a former school teacher, you know, he has, he knows a lot of these kids and at least knows where to contact and he has contacts, you know. Our, our problem was is, is he was contacting like the YMCA and they're like, oh yeah, we're having a class, but only if they work for us. So, you know, I mean, it, it was, you know, that was what we were running into. Sure, yeah, we're having a class, but they have to work for us to, to come to the class. So it's like, where are we going to get new lifeguards, you know? And that's what, we had two, two lifeguards who, who couldn't work for the first couple of weeks because they were taking a course. You know, that's, that's how strapped in we were last year. At one point, there was a question if we were going to be able to open, you know, because we didn't have enough lifeguards. And then, you know, when the board decided to go with the, the bonus, that enticed a couple, a couple people. One girl was going to go someplace else and she decided to stay in town. So I mean, luckily that happened or else we may not have opened last year. I mean, you can't open with three lifeguards. You know, you're talking maybe two days a week then, if that's all it would have been.
We had, we had that whole, that was, that was the issue two years ago.
Yeah, it was, it was the same issue two years ago. And it really came to a head this year.
Yeah, because the residents are buying yearly passes, they don't want to buy a pass and then find out.
No, you're right.
They can only go.
They're going to go on a Friday afternoons or something, you know?
Yeah, no.
Do you see there's a problem this year for lifeguards?
I, I don't know yet. We're just, we're just in the process of putting the, the word out for the lifeguards. We just okayed the specs and hopefully that's going to go out this week or last week or just the one out.
I think one, I think it just went out.
I think it just went out, so.
So there's no anticipation of the, what, did you have four last year, you said?
Seven.
Seven? Any of them coming back or have any of them shown interest in it or we don't know? We just kind of break ties at the end of summer and hope?
Well, you know, I mean, should Mr. Berry come back as, as, as the director? I know that he's already reached out to some of the lifeguards to see if they're interested in coming back.
And where do they get the classes, the training?
The YMCA's.
If they're going to.
Right, 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 no, I mean, in the past, that was a great resource, but last year was.
Well, I think that might have a little COVID thing happened in there too, they may still.
Oh, it, it's definitely still playing a part, yeah.
So where did they end up getting their training if they didn't, you know?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure where exactly they got it, but there was, there was, there was somebody else that was doing it. I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
I was just, I was one of, you know, it's like Boy Scouts of America's summer camp programs, they, they all have lifeguards there. Somehow they had to get trained somewhere to be lifeguards.
They did, they did the same thing too.
Okay.
They had a training class, worked for them. Yeah, that, last year was, was very, very different.
All right, well, hopefully it works better this year.
Yeah.
I apologize, the Clear Pond Park director's been posted, I saw that was posted, but the lifeguard's not yet posted.
Okay.
I must say, Scott, they did a great job, you know, I went there a couple of times myself, there's Brian, you know, but the place was clean, it was well taken care of, it was really good, they did a terrific job, thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I think they did a good job with what they had. You know, it's, it's, it's good, it's good for the town.
Yep, thank you.
Absolutely.
Fantastic resource, I just hope we can keep it open five, six, seven days a week and.
I know, I mean, and, and at one point, till, right till the very end, we only had enough lifeguards, we were going to have to go to five days. And then, and then two of the kids stepped up and were taking a course. So it was a couple of weeks, but they were able to come on board, so it worked out, we got lucky last year. I hopefully cross my fingers that, you know, that they come back. You know, I, I think there's, I know one of them has aged out, meaning they've graduated college, so, you know, they're off working full time, you know? Maybe, no, you're right. Absolutely. No, no, absolutely.
FBI campaign gig.
Yeah, all right, so moving on to all these other, does anyone have questions on, you know, some of these other, I mean, you know, there's like the big.
166%.
Yeah. It, it just seems like maybe things have been shifted around in different line items because like supplies is up 166%.
Yeah, but how much is it, 500 bucks?
It's 2,000 overall. So it went from 750 to 2,000.
Right, and if you go back prior years, the budget was 2,000.
Okay, so it's probably reflecting more.
Last year, it got trimmed, certain things got trimmed and those were earmarked for Clear Pond. So what he had to spend was cut, you know, so I tried to build that back up.
Yep.
You know?
So is it safe to say some of this stuff is like pre-COVID numbers? So that would be pre what we have on our paper? We would have to go back to 2019 to see a.
Right.
A realistic.
Right.
Okay.
Right, let's see if I can.
If we look at the actual for '22 for supplies, it was 2372.
Yep.
Yeah, it ran, you know, 1,400, 1,100, 2,700. '22 was 2,300.
Did we ever get the credit card system out there?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, there was, there were connectivity issues.
Well, that and, and, you know, honestly, she called me and said, I need your social security number. And I said, no, I'm not giving my social security number to put on the credit card machine. I, I mean.
No, I don't think.
Why would, why would anybody here do that?
Yeah, no, I don't think you should have to, there's got to be a way around that.
Inquire, yeah, inquire a social security number.
Yeah.
But I also, I also think we were in between treasures too, so.
Last year, last year was, literally is, is they need someone's social security number.
Really?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
There's no way of accepting credit cards as municipalities?
I have a town credit card that has my social security number on it.
PayPal type of cash out, a Venmo, set up a, set up a cell phone specifically for the. Just do a Venmo, PayPal, cash out. Everybody seems to have that.
Venmo's pretty popular.
14-year-old grandson's going to cash out, he's killing it.
Yeah, and I mean, it's not, you know, the little kid that walks up to the thing to buy a popsicle or something and has a dollar bill. You're talking about the parents that may go there with a couple of friends and they, you know, want to cash out for five kids, you know?
Or buy a season's pass or whatever.
Or buy a season's pass or something, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Venmo's definitely an option.
We can ask around about that, I guess.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yep.
What's soggy dollar bills?
No one wants that.
Pull out of this.
Many times. Many times, I can remember that as a kid.
No one wants that, no one wants to see that. All right, otherwise, it doesn't look like there's a whole lot new, it doesn't, anyone else want to ask questions, be my guest?
I have one.
Yep.
How did it go being residents only? Did that, what was your take on that? I, we've heard good things, but I feel a different take.
I, I wasn't there a lot, but you know, in, in talking with Mr. Berry, you know, it, it was a lot less stressful, you know, they didn't have any commotions, let's put it that way, I'll be nice with that word, you know, no, no incidences, you know, which they were having and 99% of them were out of town people.
Did they still have enough people on a daily basis to kind of justify having the guards there and stuff?
Yeah, I mean, you know, and because they, they ran, they ran the swim lessons, you know, so that takes up, you know, two people in the morning on top of the people being the lifeguard, you know, watching the water. And that's, that's, that's gone, gone up, and I think it's already over budget, what we were projected. So that's a, that's a good thing, you know, it's a great thing. I mean, because it, it dwindled down to a couple hundred dollars for the summer, yeah. So we're up to, I mean, it was $300, $750, and last year was 1,700. And it, it's tough because the first week of the season, which is where a lot of the cash comes in, that's where they, they sign up for the swimming lessons, they do the season's passes, is going to be in this fiscal year. And the rest of it's in this fiscal year. So, you know, so what we're seeing here is the last eight weeks, where a lot of, a lot of the season's passes were purchased in the first week. I would, you know, if you're going to go there, if you know you're going to go there, right, you're going to buy it as soon as you go, rather than forking out $5 a person to get in. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, no, no problem.
Anybody else?
Yeah, there, there was talk at the CapEx meeting about opening up the fields next door for about 115,000 is what they needed. Is that back on the table?
Um, yeah, there's a, I just got something today from Mike Smith, his iteration. I'm going to have some conversations about it, but we'll bring it to the board.
Yeah, I think we get it going for the fall.
Yeah, we're hoping.
That would be the, that would be the hope, if we can get it done sometime this spring or the summer, that they'll be in full, full use because they're ready. Those fields are dying to be used.
Yeah, I know, I'm on board of a couple sports teams and there's money, was money set aside to put into those fields. That's been sitting there, it's probably going to go away because it took too long. So I'll get on it.
Well, we had, we had a couple of sports groups that promised a lot of things and never came through.
Yeah, well, I know I got, I had money sitting there waiting for you guys.
It's a, it's a really good ARPA project if the, if the board said, you know.
I'd say, say we, I'd say we put it in the CapEx, speaking, speaking as somebody on the CapEx committee, we put it on the CapEx now and get it, and get it approved before I retire from this board.
We're doing a ARPA, we're doing a ARPA at the town meeting, we can get it moving really fast.
Could that potentially be a swamp now that you got the playground?
Um, yeah, we have an ARPA anyway, but yeah, yeah.
I'd love to see those fields moved. I'd love to see those fields moved.
Yeah, do you think those fields would open up more revenue opportunity, or just spread out leagues you already have?
Um, well, we've, we've got help over there already for the soccer program, so our feeling was to maybe let soccer try using those fields, and then it would open up these fields right here for other groups that are already interested, we have, you know, we have a couple of groups that have expressed, you know, field use, and we could kind of control it a little better, you know?
So you've got groups that are willing to come and pay but can't yet, just due to some space.
Yeah, right, we're kind of, we're kind of tight for space, I mean, we can squeeze it in, but then you're overusing a field, and, I mean, like soccer approached me, they wanna take this corner over here and reseed it and not use it, and I'm like, I'm all for that, as long as we can spread everybody out, and that's part of it too, is keep people off, but spread, spread people out and not overtax the other fields, that's why the new fields are imperative to get in the mix.
I wanted to talk about the capital, is that okay now, or you wanna?
Um...
We mentioned, I think, last meeting that we're gonna do capital.
Yeah, um, do you wanna talk about the revenue, let's talk about the revenue, Rich, and then...
Okay, can I just ask a question on the expense side? You got fifteen thousand dollars here for a capital project, what is that, Scott? In your budget?
Yes.
I'm not talking about the capital plan.
Yes, no, right, in here, yes. What is it for?
Yeah.
It's a good question.
Okay.
That we didn't have anything earmarked at the time.
Okay, because if you recall our discussion that we had months ago, okay, that we were talking about redoing the basketball court over here, is that gonna be done?
That's in the twenty-three budget, if you'll notice, there's twenty thousand dollars of capital, that's what that's gonna pay for.
Okay, so this fifteen is for something else?
Yep, whether it's renovating a field, you know, taking a field down and redoing it.
Okay, thanks.
And if we have the other fields going, then we'll be able to do that, we'll be able to take a field and rest a field for a whole season.
Okay.
And that's what they really need, especially these soccer fields.
Okay, I'm all set on that question.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions on the revenue?
Do you have a revenue question for Mike?
Yep.
Um, it's probably a good reason, but how is it that on the, maybe we're just being conservative, which is fine, but how do, how do the Ted Williams Camp Hall rentals and bar rentals both go down, but food services go up fifty percent? So we go from sixty-five to fifty-two?
I think it's just rebalancing the way they're...
Oh, it's sixty-five to fifty-two?
Yes.
Because we were never gonna make the eighty-five.
Okay, so that's just a more expected number than what we're seeing.
Trying to, I mean, it was, the fifty-two was taken in consideration what we've gotten over the past couple of years, and then it was bumped up a little bit, because in talking with the folks at Boston Tavern, that they, you know, she goes, "Well, I can't give you a number," I said, "I understand that, I'm just asking in general, you know, how are your reservations coming out?" You know, and she said, "Oh, we're probably up ten percent," I went, "Okay," so, you know, we upped it like seven percent or eight percent.
I might be able to help on this a little bit too, some of it is just kind of rebalancing where things are actually hosted.
Yes.
So the hall rental year-to-date is only thirty thousand five hundred.
Oh, okay.
Bar rental's only thirteen three forty-two, but food services year-to-date is over forty thousand.
Okay.
It's just how it gets categorized.
So that's where it kind of got moved.
All right, so it's all just shifting around?
Yeah.
To a more realization of a number.
All right, appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else on the revenue? All right, move to the capital, yes?
We gave you guys a new page, what page? You have the landscape page?
So, I think the first two things were part of other budgets, right?
They were, they probably shouldn't be on there, we're gonna clean, we'll clean that, make sure it's cleaned up for the final.
Okay, so the Ted Williams Camp skate park improvements, we have that in 2024, which is twenty-five thousand dollars, right? Is that what you're questioning?
Well, that's one of my questions, this seems to be flipped a little bit compared to last year, Scott, and how this was laid out, and so, why all of a sudden is the skate park the number one priority?
Well, I wouldn't call it the number one priority over the past year, I mean, we're very fortunate to get the tennis court taken, taken care of.
Right.
And this spring, we're gonna work on the basketball court.
Correct.
So, the next thing was the skate park, nothing's been done to it since it was built.
No, no, I understand that, but we had a lot of discussion about the Clear Pond, you know, the Clear Pond basketball courts, the Clear Pond, you know, equipment and so forth, and I just, my question is, I thought they had a higher priority.
I do too.
Okay.
But I got outvoted.
I just, I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know what twenty-five thousand dollars is going to do for a quote-unquote skate park, I don't know what that means, is it tearing it out and putting a brand new one, I don't know, I mean, is that what they're talking about?
No, they're talking about fixing where you come onto each, each apparatus, the way they, it was done originally is, it's a bump, okay, so the tire was kind of just plopped in, because they got the cement units, they come down, and then they have a lip like this, so when they did it, they put in tar, and it goes like, like that, so that was gonna come out and resurface, and resurface it, it wasn't tearing up the tar, there's no reason to tear up the tar in that.
It's not fencing?
It might be repairing, I mean, there's a fence already around it, it might be repairing some of the fencing, you know, to, to... But no, I, I agree with you, I thought the other stuff was more important, but I got outvoted.
Okay.
Okay!
That's an answer.
Yeah, why?
But I, I think, and this is my personal opinion, you know, whether the board and the finance committee agrees with me, but I would like to see some of this repair work done at Clear Pond, that's out in twenty-six, out in twenty-seven, twenty-seven, right?
Well, there's the, there's the...
Three of them, honestly.
Work to the, to the bathhouse next year.
So, my question here is, is that, you know, these projects have all were pushed out, and some of these projects were, we've made a lot of improvements over here.
Absolutely.
Okay, tons of improvements.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we're doing our best over at John Pond, as you know.
Yes.
Um, but, and they're gonna do those fields over there, so if, I don't wanna say this is all you have to do in the next five years, I don't know, but, you know, seems pretty skinny to me, to be honest with you, you know, that should be, if there's additional items, so what I think we ought to consider, at least, this is just me, my personal opinion, is take the Clear Pond projects and propose to use ARPA money to get those things fixed now, that's me, you know, instead of having to wait, you know, four or five years to get it done, but that's my opinion, so...
Well, that would be great, I mean...
I mean, they would qualify.
They will qualify, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I loved it, I loved it, they were on my list for next year.
The power of ARPA money would be fine.
Yeah.
But I mean, we know the basketball court, it'd really be, it'd really be nice to redo that basketball court, so it could be a multipurpose court.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You could even play pickleball there if you wanted to.
Sure.
But tennis, we used to be tennis, if you remember.
Yeah, tennis, I used to play tennis there.
I did too.
Yep.
And, you know, while my kids swam, so...
What, what, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that, you know, to me, that adds more value, you know, to the park itself, and then the same thing, I don't know about the playground, the playground may be a little more expensive, I don't know.
That's gonna be my point, so I have a question, if we're gonna talk about an ARPA project now, there's one thing they have it sitting in twenty-eight, fifty thousand dollars for playground equipment is like, you know, fix a slide, I mean, that's just, it's just not enough, it's not enough to do serious playground work, so I think...
No, but I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, I don't know if that playground is still standing.
It's, it's the same one that was there when I was a kid.
I know. The question is, is it safe, you know, okay, that's a question that I...
The Seastorm was never safe.
But, you know, I don't know, that's just my opinion, I just hate to see us wait four or five years to do some of these projects when we have the money now.
Is that December twenty-four or twenty-three, the town ARPA funds?
December twenty-four.
Twenty-four, so I mean, that's next year.
So conceivably, what we, what you could do, just a suggestion, is you could ask the park commission to come back with a package for Clear Pond Park repairs, and ARPA worked from the ARPA, and we have had the conversations about that before anyway, I meant, you know...
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna replace the, the guard shack, which was old when I was a kid.
All right, so maybe the next thing after the new fields is a package...
I'd love to do that.
Clear Pond.
That would, that would make me happy, because that's, I had it, I had it next year, and I don't know, it's just my opinion. Nobody else feels the same way, but...
They realize a unique generational opportunity for the town right now with that money.
Yeah, with the ARPA money, for sure.
I'm really excited that Clear Pond is being used again around residents, and this gives us the other opportunity to provide some things, like we're doing with the Pramash, you know, playground, which is great, and I talked about that for a number of years, but, you know, and the fields, which is, was one of the UPET projects.
Yep.
Let's do these few other things and get them done.
No, I, I, I think it's probably a case of, you know, the, the board not, not realizing what we can go for and how, how can we get it, you know, I mean, I know capital, capital project money is, is tough to get, but, you know, I mean, I don't know how free the ARPA money is, I mean, I don't mean free, I'm saying, you know, what, what can we use it for? If we can use it for these projects over Clip-On, I'd be willing to, to jump on some type of a program and work out something as soon as tax season gets over.
I don't know if you and I have spoken, Scott, but I've certainly spoken to your predecessor, and I spoke to, I've spoken to Mike Smith a number of times about you, the ability of using ARPA for things like Clear Pond, that's something we talked about.
And these ARPA funds can only be used for certain things, you know, so it's very limited for what we can use those funds, and parks happens to be one of them, so, anyways, that's my two cents.
Yeah, no, I'm all for that.
He's already, like, I can see it now, I know, like, saving myself, his list is already...
That and John Pond, those two are kind of...
I hear of a Clip-On. Oh, I know.
I think, I think, I think if you're gonna use ARPA money, this, I'm just saying, if you use ARPA money, I think you come up with a really solid project.
Yep.
You know, renovate the playground, renovate the, you know, the, the...
Basketball courts.
Basketball courts, deal with the mini golf course if you decide to do that, that kind of thing, so really just cleans up the place and makes it look, you know, like, like town deserves.
Yep.
So I don't think you're talking about like twenty thousand here, thirty thousand here, forty thousand here, I think you come up with a plan and a project, that'd be a couple hundred thousand dollars or something like that, which will really, you know, really make a dramatic difference for the, for the facility.
And you've actually got two playgrounds over there.
Right, that's right.
There's the big one, and then there's the small, like toddler one, which is a nice shaded area, but it's right on Clear Pond Road, from a safety point of view, in on the bend.
It's not great.
Which is like, eh, like, that picket fence is not gonna hold a car back, just to kind of move that to the other playground.
That sounds like a plan, huh?
Great.
Okay.
A plan to plan, at least.
A plan to plan, yes. Um, all right, any other questions on anything to do with the parks?
Is there anything that was, I mean, we just talked about a bunch of capital stuff, but was there anything that the commission felt was like below the cut line and just didn't break forward at all?
I mean, we've been, it's just we've been so busy with some of the, some of the projects going forward that, you know, I mean, yeah, some of the board members felt that some of the things over the park weren't as important as other things, personally, I didn't think that the skate park was number one, but again, I got outvoted, one vote.
One vote.
On one vote, you know, I, I was pushing for the basketball courts and that, but, yeah.
Because, no disrespect to anybody, but all of these are basically renovations, there's no net new services that they provide, you know, so there are other ideas out there, it'd be great to hear them.
The basketball court, to me, is new because it's unusable right now, so, right, I mean, I mean, the tire is, you know, it's, it's a waffle, it's terrible.
It's extreme.
Yeah, I mean, they used to be...
Turn that into a skate park and use this.
There you go.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to see, uh, the street walking set up someplace too, but that's another, that's another story.
So before we wrap up with parks, I just wanna remind everyone at home about Lakeville Day, on, what's that, the twenty-sixth, right?
The twenty-sixth.
March twenty-sixth, so Sunday.
Sunday, yep, come one, come all.
Come one, come all, during the day, website has the times, I'm sure, unless you know them by heart.
Eleven to three.
Okay, but...
It's geared to all Lakeville people, Lakeville vendors, we don't have very many vendors, but it's all showcasing what's in town and what we have to offer at the parks, we have some of the groups coming to do demonstrations, and, you know, there'll be some food, and there'll be a beer and wine garden there, courtesy of Boston Tavern, and, yeah, I just, you know, cross my fingers for good weather.
Yep. Okay. Anyone else, are we good? Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott.
I think that leaves Town Administrator.
Page thirteen, financials on fifteen, so there are, this is kind of a catch-all, it's like point town administrative budgets for a number of different things, we simplified them a bit last year by collapsing some categories into public buildings and properties, but I'll start off with select board, you'll see on the compensation side, the paid staff is basically just three percent increase, well, non-union, one thing that the board should be aware of is the impact of the five-member board, there is some impact in FY24, which is not funded here, frankly, because the resolution hadn't been produced yet, we didn't quite there, but I can tell you what the financial impact would be for twenty-four and what it would be for twenty-five, for twenty-four, there are two pieces in both years, one is the actual stipend, and the other part is the assumption of what's gonna happen in terms of healthcare buyout, if they take the full buyout, then it's, full buyout of family, it's five thousand dollars per subscriber for the buyout, so the maximum annual impact would be nine thousand annually for stipends for the two members, plus ten thousand for the healthcare buyout, which would show up in health, in health insurance, so that's nineteen thousand dollars.
Just clarification on that, they don't have to take the buyout, they can take health insurance.
They do not have to take the buyout.
The health insurance would be substantially...
Be more, right.
Lot more.
Right, because, what do you, what do you, what do you plan for, so, the, and then in, that nine thousand stipend in twenty-four would cover three months, right, April, May, and June, so that'd be two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for those three months, so if there's a desire to amend that accordingly, we could, and then healthcare buyout, we could put another twenty-five hundred dollars for the healthcare buyout in FY, in the FY24 health insurance budget, so that's compensation, any questions about compensation, or I can move on? Okay. Under expenses, there's really not much change, the only, the only, there's an adjustment on dues and subscriptions, basically reflective of prior year expenses, and that includes MMA, that kind of thing, there's a reduction in auditing services, that is based on the quote we have for our airing contract, there's no need to do, I think Todd mentioned this a little while back, there's no need to do the OPEB evaluate, actual evaluation in twenty-four, because every other year, so that, so we save a little money in twenty-four.
All right.
Yeah.
Todd also mentioned that we might have to do another audit because of the federal funding increasing?
Said we might, there's a small component audit.
Okay.
Yeah, because of the ARPA money, yeah, finance committee, you know, finance committee has a big bump, a couple hundred bucks, which for good reasons, finance committee members have taken to start to go to trading and attending events, which I think is really, really helpful, some of the training is out there for finance committees, so I applaud the committee for that, and it's certainly a small price for the town to pay. The reserve fund, we proposed to hold at a hundred and fifty thousand from last year, for sort of nation, the current balance of the reserve fund is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand and fifty-five dollars, there were some transfers, as you recall, at Fall Town meeting. Which leads us into legal expenses, which may be, which is probably a likely target for reserve fund funding in FY24, twenty-three, I mean, the legal expenses are higher this year than last year, year-to-date is over sixty-five thousand at this point already, and we're only in March, there's, you know, don't wanna get into much detail, but there's a fair amount of legal work going on for the town right now, so there's, I would consider it likely that there'll be some type of reserve fund transfer that we'll have to do to balance that out. Fields boards, minor expense, public buildings and properties, I know that looks larger than FY22 and twenty-one, but bear in mind that, that consists of a transfer from another, several different places, we took the money from other general government, one ninety-nine, Historic Library, six sixty, as well as Historic Townhouse, all that got bundled in there, so that affected that number a bit as well, and there was, I think we took from facilities as well, I believe, so the, the number overall, you know, from twenty-three, twenty-four was up by point five percent, mainly due to rubbish removal expenses, which we've seen elsewhere as well. Cable advisory is another location where we may need to have, Town Reports is just the regular Town Reports, cable advisory is another location where we may have to have some type of transfer, I'm not certain though, because work may already be done, because they did the work already, so if there's an invoice, but the year-to-date is at seventy-three hundred dollars, so if there's another invoice that you need to come in, we may have to adjust that a bit, I don't think it'll be a big number.
So since both contracts are signed, why do we need the eight thousand dollars in twenty-four?
Um, I think it's a good point, Richard, it's a good point, I don't know whether there'll be additional legal expense coming along or not, they did request a continuation to maintain the budget, but your, your, I think it's a good point. So perhaps if the boards look at adjusting that, we could.
When do they start their renewal negotiations? Cause I feel like.
Comcast is already.
A year before.
One year?
Yeah.
So that should be a down year.
Five years old.
I think Rich is correct, that should be a down year.
Right.
Yeah. So, um, Historic Commission holds flat, and, um, that, that's kind of the whole suite of select board town administrative budgets. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about those.
Anybody? Rich?
No, I'm okay with this budget, but, uh, you know, we talked about, uh, uh, property, um, insurance and pri, and liability insurance and workman's comp insurance, and, uh, I really think it's time to go out and get, uh, different prices, you know, at this point. That, that bill is over three hundred thousand dollars now, and I think it's something that needs to be done. It's been that way.
If the board wants to go out, we can certainly look at that. It's really worth it.
Yeah, I don't even remember the last time, it's probably been, what?
Long time.
Ten years? I mean, I've been in the Selectmen's Office for four years, in the excessors for four years before that. Um, no, I think it's important to do it.
I think you're probably right, we, we get good service from our current vendor, but if a, if a, if a current, current vendor wants to be, has a competitive bid.
Especially in the workman's comp area, they're constantly changing these companies, you know, and that's, that's an issue.
It's, it's, it's probably, regardless of, of cost, it's probably a good best practice. So, um, so, yeah, we, we can certainly look at that for the coming year.
I mean, you don't have to do it right now, you could do it anytime, doesn't have to be done by July one.
Right.
But you could, I mean, if you can get it done by July one, that'd be great, but doesn't necessarily, you could change that insurance anytime you want, so.
Right, right, yeah, I'm aware. So if that, we can put that on the list of goals and things to do, we can certainly look at that.
Yep.
There's a lot of resources, you and I have talked about it in the past, too.
Yeah, sure.
And happy to send you names and numbers of contact, emails, whatever you want, for so many people I know. And I'm sure there's other vendors out there as well, so. You can save, save a few bucks, not a bad thing. Also, look at services, sometimes you make it better services than a product.
And, um, I'd have to put Ari on this block, but is his contract coming up for renegotiation early twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Calendar twenty-four?
Yeah, in twenty-four.
Yeah, okay.
May first, twenty. May seventeen, twenty, twenty-four.
I just, just had that number.
Three, three oh five.
Right there.
Countdown or? Three oh five PM. Twenty-three seconds.
So that's.
Um, as far as that's concerned, I don't wanna wait. I mean, you know, that's what MMA is saying, if you have someone that, you know, so I think the new board should jump, you know, right to putting something in place to put a timeline in place for it. Um, you know, that's their recommendation. If you're happy with your people, let them know it, and, you know, so, um, you know.
Ari, where's the, um, where's the line item for the liability insurance?
It is on page, hold on. There you go, it's on, property fixed costs, page sixty-eight.
It's Clay Pond, and it's all lines for liability, is that held separately?
If you look in their, this group, group insurance, and like go a little further down, property slash liability insurance, you see it?
I see, um.
So like a little fourth down there?
So. Oh, property, yeah, that's number forty-five.
Workers' comp and his liability, yeah.
Thank you.
And we use a six percent increase based on, you know, just benchmarks that by, are, are recommended by, by the vendor.
Does the, does the insurance rate trends increase based on what the state approves for municipality as well? I actually don't know that, they should.
Um.
What was that?
The insurance market is such a, it's.
Well, usually the state, or the, the, uh, DOI division will set an increase for the insurance companies. They'll say you can have a two percent increase this year, or two point three, and my question is.
Well, we're self-insured, too.
Cause you, you're self-insured, so does that make a difference in what your rate?
I think like any, anyone who's ever had insurance will, will understand this, you know, your, 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 your rates are based on a combination of your, um, uh, of the, of the, of the rate factors and the experience. So, you know, if you had big claims, then you either lose your carry or rates go up a lot. You know, it just, it just kind of happens.
Well, maybe for some of it.
In this case, in this case, um, municipal pool is smooth.
Right, it's a level.
But nevertheless, if, you know, I don't know, if ma, if massive storms came through all of Massachusetts and caused billions of dollars in expense, insurance rates would be going up first as well. Um, so it, yeah, it's, 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 it's complicated.
Yeah, but, but my, my point is that, as a municipality, you don't see, well, and again, I, I'm not lying for me with the company we have, um, you're, you're in a cooperative, correct? You're buying through a.
A property.
You, for your property, your liability, your property liability.
Yeah.
So there should be no increase to, say, Lakeville, it would be an increase across the entire group.
The group, right.
So, cause I know a lot of times in some of the other programs, when a town does have huge losses and it's going to an increased, uh, a premium hike, what they'll say is that town that created that, you're not, we're not gonna do a premium hike, we're gonna increase your deductible to two thousand dollars.
My only point, my only point lies, it's not dissimilar to like a health insurance group.
Right.
If you have a health insurance group that consists of several different municipalities like ours does, several different group organizations, then the, then the experience of that group weighs on the overall rates. So if we happen to have, you know, some, we, we are able to have some segment of the group, may not be us, who's a real dog in terms of their experience, you know, that is, that is going to have an effect on us at some point.
Okay, for, for the, for the other conferences.
Yeah, that's all I was trying to say.
Cause I, I'm just looking at the big number of the, you know, you got two hundred and eighteen thousand property liability, um, you know, and then the workman's comp, I guess, that's gonna change based on your comp rate, so.
Right.
You know, if we can work on those two, that's, that's three hundred.
The main, the main issue there is gonna be administration in terms of cost, the, the rate's gonna, the base rate's not, workers' comp's gonna be.
The comp is.
It's gonna be the rate, right.
Because you're rating, I get it.
It's comping life, yeah.
And then property liabilities is where you're gonna see the savings.
But you can't, you can't save money, exceedingly on workers' comp, but we did, we did this in the event when we went out, um, based on the administration cost, you can save a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's not gonna be determinative, but, you know, every little bit counts, I guess. So I, I have no problem whatsoever with direction to go out to bid on this stuff, that's fine.
Okay.
Um, just to follow on to property liability, I assume the line items for like transfer station and parks are in their budgets because they're enterprise funds.
Right, it's charged, like charge-back share.
But they're part of the overall negotiating.
So when they charge back, it shows up as a revenue in the general fund.
Okay.
So the expense you see here is the full expense.
All right.
You see what I mean?
Yeah, but it's, it's part of the overall insurance package we've negotiated with.
The whole, the whole stew, yeah.
Anybody else? Anybody else? All right.
So the only direction tonight that I've gotten is to add the two thousand dollars through the, um, through the.
Green markets.
The green markets, that's okay, all right.
Is it two thousand or is it twenty-eight hundred? Cause there were, does it depend on the price, how many you get?
Most of them was two thousand.
I'd say two thousand.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Go to two thousand.
I don't know if you'll need to do two thousand every year either, I think you, maybe the first year you order a bunch, then you probably have a.
Yeah, he said he's been ordering like two hundred, so.
Two hundred was something that they asked for.
That'll last quite a while.
If there's any, if it goes, if two hundred is, you know, a threshold in, you know, the ordering minimum, you know, amount, or shifts the, the number, um, if it's anything more than that, just, we'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out, it's, it's not a big deal, and the, um.
And anybody can buy them, so if someone in town saw this and said, oh, I wanna donate to some.
Absolutely, that's why I was saying we could, you know, with donations or, or what.
And that may be something my family will consider.
I would think downstream, they'll, you know, there would be, um, once you have this big push to replace them, the, the maintenance numbers, the, the state, the census number's gonna be a lot lower, be five hundred bucks a year, that kind of thing.
Cause they definitely need to keep the inventory, because they.
Right, right.
I mean, how many they have is probably a lot more than two hundred.
I was just gonna ask how many vets we have buried in town, but I.
I don't know the answer to that.
Whatever that means.
They have all that information if you want.
As long as we get enough, that's all we care about.
Um, okay, so the last thing that I did put on the agenda, because it's a bit relevant right now, is a cannabis facilities update. So I don't want to imply, because it's not necessarily true, real estate taxes have been paid on properties, cause a couple of people said to me, you know, what is it they pay? So I had to clarify, so I just wanna be sure that folks understand that we're not talking about real estate taxes. Um, what we're talking about is in their host community agreements, because the state legislature made the change where they said that, you know, cannabis companies, marijuana companies don't have to pay their im, impact fee. Now we have several of them saying they don't have to pay anything, including the, um, contribution, uh, donation money, um, but, um, in our contract, it's called something different, it's called a benefit fee, but, you know, Ari alluded to it, and I mean, I really don't wanna talk a lot about what's going on because there's a min, there's one lawsuit, um, but it's really kind of tough for us. I know we said at the beginning of these budget meetings that we have zero, um, revenue in this budget from the marijuana companies, but, um, it's becoming a bigger and bigger problem. I know Rich has thoughts on it, too, so I'm just gonna leave my comments there, but I just, you know, a couple of folks said to me, you know, well, what do you mean exactly? So I just wanna be sure, you know, if they, they can go for the abatement process on the real estate taxes, personal property tax, like everyone else can, but what I'm talking about, what I think we're talking about, both of us, is the fees that were contracted in their host community agreements is what the marijuana companies have pretty much stopped paying. I, I know Rich has comments, too.
So all of a sudden, um, there's five of them that have cultivation resid, uh, facilities here in town.
Five companies?
Five. We are possibly the only town.
Yes.
In the state of Massachusetts that has five cultivation facilities in town. Ryan will bear that out, cause he remembers the discussion about that.
Good old cold storage.
So, you know, as, as Lear has pointed out, you know, there was host agreements that were signed, um, five, five, five years or less, I guess, at this point. And so they've decided that, um, um, because the, the legislature changed the law, that we shouldn't be charging them impact fees. Well, we're not charging them impact fees, okay? There's a section in the, in the host community agreements talks about impact fees. You're supposed to calculate, you know, what it's costing you for police and fire, and we've never charged any of them, none of them, zero. And so our position is, is that it's, um, uh, what's the exact term, benefit, community?
Community benefit fee.
Community benefit.
Benefit payment, benefit payment.
Payment, and, uh, they should be paying that. And so now all of a sudden, it's snowballed, um, one of them had been suing us prior to the change in, in the, uh, legislation, uh, to say that we're not gonna pay it, okay? And then another one, I mean, I got, who they are, I'm gonna tell you who they are, because it's no secret. It's, uh, Bunnyful Farms, it's, um, a company called Juicy, and it's a company called Northeast Alternatives. And Juicy and Northeast Alternatives are two big, big companies, okay? And so, uh, what they're doing is they just say, they didn't even tell us, they just all of a sudden said, we're not gonna pay anymore. And so Ari, you know, looking at the financial statement, says something isn't right here. We don't see any payments coming in, and they weren't paying. And so that's what it all came about. So, you know, Lear and I, and cause the other member can't participate, uh, I've had conversations with town council about this, as to what we should do about this, and, you know, um, at this point, we've done all kinds of things, and sent them letters, and all usual stuff, you know, notifications, and, uh, basically, well, we're gonna have to take legal action against them, you know, if we want to get our money. And it's really a shame, because, you know, these agreements, the first one, I think, expires in June, Ari, if I'm not mistaken?
Um, yes.
June, then the next one expires in August of this year. So then we say to ourselves, well, what are we doing? Why am I sure we renew these agreements if they're not gonna pay? So it's, uh, it's not a very good, you know, situation.
Situation.
Okay, at all. And, uh, it's time that people know exactly what's going on, that's what I said to Lear, I said, Lear, you need to put this on the agenda, cause people need to understand, you know, cause we're saying, we're not getting anything, and so why isn't it in the budget? Cause they're not getting anything, and people are saying, you know, that, oh, jeez, we're getting hundreds of thousands of dollars from the marijuana company, companies, we're not, and we never did. So we're estimating the costs we're gonna lose, you know, this year's budget is four hundred thousand dollars, which is a significant amount of money for a town of our size. So, um, that's, you know, kind of where we are. I don't know, I, I, I would like to, uh, further talk about the budget situation a little bit, but maybe if anybody has any questions of.
Yeah, I'm gonna have a lot of stuff.
About the, uh, about the marijuana thing, but this is not good.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's.
There've been nothing, excuse me, there've been nothing, no problems. So one on three-ten Cunys Wells Drive, you've probably seen a lot of articles about that in the newspaper, they're just terrible, just awful, so, anyways, great.
Cause originally this whole proposition, not just to Lakeville, but to the entire state.
Right.
Was said, this is a great thing, because we're going, this is how you're gonna buy your police guys, your fire engines, rebuild your schools, we want, so all, so then the state decide, ah, you know what, we're gonna do away with it, but they still get their sales tax, correct?
They still get their sales tax, and retail, retail stores.
Retail.
Get, if we had retail, then we'd get three percent of the retail sales, we don't have any.
What we have is growers.
Growers, right, so. So then they decided that this is an impact, but we've never had an impact, so how are they getting around this? Has, has, the court said, you said there's a lot of litigation?
Well, and, you know, there's not been a ton of direction from the state either on what you do with existing host community agreements and, you know, so there really isn't a ton of direction, so we're kind of figuring it out as we go, but I, I mean, we just can't turn our backs, it's not like it's one, we just can't turn our backs on five host community agreements.
What, what is, what's their alternative? I mean, you, you can't keep, I'm assuming they own or lease the buildings, is that?
They lease the buildings. I'm sorry, one of them owns.
So it's not like we can throw them out of town.
Yeah. Bunnyful Farms owns the building.
Um, and, um, who's the one going to Millennium? Or fifteen Millennium, um, is that?
That's good.
Twisted Growers?
Twisted, yeah.
Twisted Growers or whatever.
I think they own.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, I'm saying, so it's not like we can say, okay, you're not gonna do business here anymore, we can't, uh, maybe we can, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. Um, I, I just, I, I don't know what our recourse is, and it seems like we're gonna spend, and now I guess I know why Ari said there's a lot of litigation.
Right, right.
Put that together, did you?
Yeah.
No, I mean, we could turn our back and say, uh, oh, forget about it, don't worry about it. I think you should have.
No, I, I agree, so like, my question is, we're gonna spend a lot of money for litigation, what is the, is it hopeful? Is it a, I, I don't.
We really don't know, but, you know.
We probably shouldn't get into too much.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't get into.
Novel arguments here that are being talked about.
Yeah, we really shouldn't get into too much, but, you know, people ask all the time, they're, you know, plus they have water connections, so they're using, you know, some of our allotment of water and.
A lot of water.
You know, so.
They're growing, there's a lot of water there.
Yeah, but, you know, I guess that's my point, you know, when marijuana was on the ballot, it was, that's how it passed, because, you know, they said, um, you know, that's where you're gonna get, the towns and the cities are gonna get some of their money, so we are counting on that much right now.
I just had this conversation today in Westbury Master four-one-three with a small town that has seven dispensaries in it, I, cause I commented to them, like, I drove by seven.
Yeah.
And they're having the same issue, they have some issues with money coming in, but at least they're getting the three percent, that was my question.
Yeah.
Uh, but, um, yeah.
See, the cultivation has not been tailored to the three percent.
Three percent.
Yeah. So.
Maybe, maybe we, I don't know. I'm sorry, I don't know.
Anyways, so, and I did wanna clarify to that other point, that we're not talking about their real estate tax, like the tax that they pay on your buildings.
That's what I'm saying, we have no, there's, there's nothing to go after there, other than this.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, because some of them are leasing, so I don't wanna imply that the owners aren't, you know.
So it's more about the community host payment, or whatever we're calling it.
Community benefit payment.
That one.
Yeah, so, anyways.
And I've got questions that maybe are, that are directed to you specifically, um, based on what they are, if there's litigation, but are we aware of any precedent yet in the state of a, a company in town saying this isn't working anymore?
There's at least one other lawsuit going on right now, and, um, we're pushing.
State city of April.
Yeah.
I can probably help touch you offline, Brian.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're, you know, we're pushing, Rich and I are pushing really hard to find out where our people, our companies stand, so, you know, so we can make a next move.
Am I correct, Juicy wasn't even the original company, right? Didn't they buy out some?
Nature's remedy.
Nature's remedy.
So they weren't even at the table originally?
Yeah.
No, they came, I don't know, you may not remember, but they came in, oh, we're gonna do this for you, do this and do that. They've done nothing, they've done zero.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, they just, they don't care. It's too bad.
I mean, you know.
We had nothing to do with these contracts, you know, we, you and I had nothing to do with these contracts, so.
Yeah. Um, but, and you know what? I think more than what we're talking about, I don't really feel comfortable talking about in open session, but, you know, we just need, people, people have said to me, where's the marijuana money? So I think it's, you know, someone even asked me, not at last night's school committee meeting, but two weeks ago, you know, they were like, don't you guys have all that money in marijuana? I'm like, no. Yeah, so we just want the finance committee to know.
We want the townspeople.
We want the townspeople to know too. Yeah, yeah.
I get it.
Yeah, so.
Did you say $400,000?
At least $400,000, yeah.
And?
And we were just almost like getting ready to be able to start taking advantage of it, you know, because it takes a while for them to all get up and running and, you know, and so anyways, any other questions, I would direct to Ari, you know, he can fill you in, but I don't think we should really say too much more because there is active litigation, so. All right. Um, yeah. Do you want to close out your meeting? Any other questions? Any other, did you want to talk about the budget?
I want to talk about the budget.
Oh, okay.
I want to talk about the school budget.
Okay.
Because I think it's important, the finance committee understands what's going on there.
Yeah.
Is there updates from yesterday?
Yeah.
Yeah, they did go down in some of their, um.
The thing, the thing is that, you know, Ari and Todd, you know, when they put together, if you go to page six of your budget, you know, when they put together the revenue projections, you know, they, at that time, actually when Ari had put it together, we didn't know that the marijuana people were not gonna continue paying their community benefit fees. So if you look at it, you can see, and this is my concern when we talk about the regional school district and we talk about, because I won't be here, but talking about going forward, because we're gonna have problems, you know, we'll get by this year, but next year is gonna be a very, very difficult year. And if you look at the numbers and you just take the, the first one is the new growth number has gone down by 40%. Now, we know what that is because there's not construction, you know, going on. And if you look at the financial statements, you'll see that the building permits through the end of February are more than half of what they were a year ago. So that's an indication that there's really not a lot of activity, you know, going on there with new construction. There's literally zero for commercial at all. I mean, if there's anything coming forward, there's a 40B project going on on Route 18. There's another one that's not, it's 55 and old next to CVS, only 19 units.
The other one on Bedford Street's only 10 units, so it's not.
12 units, yeah.
Yeah, 12.
That's okay. But that number is going down dramatically, and we've had the luxury, you know, over the last three or four years to have significant new growth, which is gonna benefit, you know, to all of us, all right, to when we look at the budgets. Now, but what concerns me more than anything else, and I mentioned this to Ari and Todd, is if you look at the second page and you talk about local receipts, and it's not that we're exposing ourselves to not having enough money for local receipts, it's just that we've increased the numbers for local receipts to offset some of the problems with the marijuana facilities and so forth. So instead of having, I don't want to use the word cushion, but instead of having the opportunity of the receipts exceeding, you know, what we budgeted, these numbers are gonna be very close now, so which means it's gonna affect free cash and so forth and so on. So that, that concerns me, you know, going forward. And if you look at the numbers, you can see that the motor vehicles, you know, going up $150,000, the EMS is going up from 875 to 980, it's about $100,000. And then the licensing permits, you can see the actual in, in '22 was $699, which is gonna go down, which is down, you know, significantly in '23. So, so that, that is a concern to me, you know, about the existing budget and being conservative, you know, with the existing budget from, from the budget and from revenue projections. So does anybody have any questions on that, what I just talked about before I talk about the school?
Sorry, Rich, one more time, you lost me in the licensing. I see the, the 700 down to 495, but bumped back up to 525. You, you lost me, one more time on that point you're making.
I'm concerned about the 525, because if I look at, if you look at what the building permits are right now.
You said they're down?
They're plummeting, big time, in the last, last couple of months, so.
So you, you think that 525 is not a realistic number?
I, I don't know. I mean, that's up to Ari to decide whether she can make that number or not.
Do you know where we are currently?
As of February.
I can tell you exactly where we are, yeah.
Okay.
You mean from, from the building?
Yeah, I was about to say where we are, but if you want to say.
I'm sorry.
I was about to tell, say where we are, but if you want to say for yourself, go ahead.
You can do that.
As of February, when it came to permits, just permits, remember this licenses includes other, involves the permits are the largest piece of it. We were at 160, 176, 170, about 200,000. Now, remember, that's not, you know, animal control is another, you know, $12,000, which is well over budget, the budget was 6,500, and the highway is also up above budget, you know, cemetery is, I think, there's several other pieces in there that are, that are above, but, you know, Todd and I are both pretty comfortable that we'll make 525.
So on the 495 that we have here, where's the total number right now?
Um, I have to add that up separately, Larry, I'm sorry. Give me a few minutes, I can do that.
If you, if you take the building permits for 20, the budget we're in right now, that ends June 30th, we budgeted $295,000, and we've only brought in $150 through the end of February.
That's a good difference.
So that's a problem.
Yeah. I mean, essentially, it's the whole area that's been steadily growing is slowing. So if you don't have as much room on the belt to expand other areas.
Right.
Any other questions on that?
Schools.
Yeah, we gotta talk about schools.
That's a big budget.
Yeah.
Are they in the page or are they just in the summary?
I think they're just in the summary, I was looking through the schools. There is nothing.
Did you get binders for, did you guys ever get, I think you got a digital copy.
For school?
For school. You didn't?
Yeah, I haven't either.
They haven't followed up with it.
We haven't gotten any, yeah.
I'll double check to make sure I didn't miss anything.
I thought we had them send you one. And then I thought you were gonna send it out, but we'll get it to you.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Because Regional's next Tuesday, right? Regional think com?
I just got my notification today.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have anything for schools.
You got that in phone?
Uh, the Zoom invite?
Yeah.
It's not in person?
No.
That's too bad.
Why isn't it in person?
No.
Last one wasn't either.
Teasing people.
He said the last one wasn't either.
The last one wasn't either.
No.
It should be, it should be in person, so people can go and ask questions.
All right, you want to talk about schools?
You want to talk about it, you want me to talk about it?
Ah, you can talk about it.
So, um, William and I went to the public hearing last night about the budget. And since the finance committee does not even have their presentation, that's too bad, because they should have the presentation for the budget, okay? You haven't seen the presentation, have you?
No, I've seen summaries.
They, they should have that, they should have it.
We had a copy for you, Brian, you didn't remember?
And then I requested a digital one at the last meeting and haven't seen that.
Okay.
Not, I didn't request it from you.
Do you have a digital one?
No, I don't have a digital one. I serve a hard copy, so I took it from my.
I guess we can try to recap and we'll follow along as best we can.
Okay, so they, they presented their budget, you know, last night and, you know, the increases and so forth and so on. And there was a lot of questions, only from me and Leah, but also from the people from Freetown, and they, they're concerned about the increase in the budget. The total budget is going up 4%, which I think is excessive, you know, from, from a budgeting standpoint, none of our budgets are going up 4% overall. And so they, they started to present some of the issues having to do with the budget. And a couple of things that, you know, I pointed out, and I think we're at 493 right now, are we?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. And I think that's too high, and it should be reduced. And, and the reason why I say that, I'll give you a couple of examples, which I brought up, and you might want to watch the.
The meeting, the meeting last night was recorded.
I don't know if you can see the presentation, but they had the meeting and they, they presented it. The first thing, you know, I tried to point out was that, you know, their budget is not sustainable at $45 million, just not sustainable, impossible. When you have $1.2 million increase in salaries, you have half a million dollars increase in health insurance costs, and then you have half a million dollars or more in special aid costs, that's it. I mean, that's, you've got $2 million, over $2 million there, and they cannot, that cannot be sustained at all, because the state aid that they get, they get $300,000 in state aid, which is great, but if you take a $2 million more of increase, then they're asking the towns to pick up that share. That's impossible for the towns to do, both towns to do, never mind, you know, it just just can't do it. And if you look at the numbers and some of the things, you know, that was pointed out, and actually Ari found this out, is that they have Ursa money. I mean, you've probably heard of Ursa money, which is, you know, federal money that they, well, actually, is that from the state or?
Federal government.
And so they give it to the school district for.
It was CARES Act.
CARES Act thing, right? So they have $318,000 in there for staffing levels. That funding is disappearing in December of this year, and that's not gonna be available. I said, well, what are you gonna do about that? And they didn't have an answer. So in their budget, they got the staffing levels that they can't, they can't maintain, maintain with the funding levels that they have. So that, that was one area.
Can I just jump in for a second? I think, I think most of you remember that we had the two CARES firefighter positions that were paid by CARES initially, but we absorbed it the first year in the 20, in this budget, I think, the 2023 budget, right? It wasn't 2022, I think it was 20.
Ari, it was two years, part 22.
But we made sure, we made sure to keep that on the front burner so we could absorb it into our, when the CARES money ran out. So as of last night, they have zero plan on how they're going to absorb that $318,000 into their 2025 budget.
So you probably, guys probably don't recall, but, you know, we got CARES funding from that federal government too.
Yeah.
Right? Between Freetown and Lakeville, between Freetown and Lakeville, we gave them $2.1 million of our CARES money for programs, for technology, for a whole bunch of stuff, right? So we're saying it's time to get something back, you know, to the towns, because that was a lot of money for, we didn't have to do that, but we stuck our neck out and through Ari's, you know, a lot of work and effort, and Todd's, I should say, you know, we committed that kind of money. That was a lot of money for us to do that, but we wanted to make sure the school programs could be maintained, and we wanted to make sure that technology for the remote learning and the Chromebooks and, and so we provided all that funding.
Right, and let me interrupt you again. What was the question? I think you were on the board for that, weren't you? Were you on the board for that or what, not?
You was either on it or just at the tail end.
Yeah, because I remember one of the questions I had was, what happens when we need to replace all these Chromebooks? What is your plan going forward, right? Or what's the plan? I mean, kids break technology, we all know that, right? What's the plan for replacement or what's the plan?
They didn't have one.
They didn't have one.
And still don't, right?
So, so I'm saying to them that you're asking for a 4% increase in the total budget, which our share of the assessment is $493,000, okay? It's a lot of money. It is a lot of money for us. And so I'm saying we need to look at alternatives to reduce that budget and, or to bring that number down, okay? So one of the things that I proposed was that they had E and D is $2.1 million, which is the largest it has ever been, ever.
They're at their maximum.
A maximum, it was so maximum, they had to turn some of it back to the community, to us, $37,000, I guess, whatever the number is. So I'm saying to myself, well, okay, I look at your technology budget, okay, and you've got Chromebook replacements in there, once again, which is fine, if they need it, they need it, we need it. And I'm saying you take the E and D to offset the cost of those Chromebooks and reduce the assessment to the town, because that could be at least a couple of hundred thousand dollars, okay? Which in our particular case would be a reduction of 58% of $200,000, whatever that is, it's a big number, okay? So that was number one. Number two is that during the discussion, and I, I wasn't aware of it, you know, at the time, that, you know, school choice, okay? School choice funding, all right? They have $966,000 in a separate funding for school choice that can be used to offset the budget, okay? If you look at the number, if you look at, I don't know if you got your sheet, but if you look at the number, not only they, they're only reducing it by 400 and something thousand, I believe the number is.
It's 469, I believe.
459. They're getting another 300 plus thousand dollars in school choice money, so which means that on the end, as of July 1, they'll have $1.3 million. And I'm.
I apologize to interrupt, that whole program came up during Regional think coms, where they were saying that we're losing $9,000 per year per student as well, so.
Well, they tried to explain that too last night.
Didn't work so well?
It's interesting, you know, to hear the explanation, but you should, I'll probably watch that meeting.
So they're saying they want to use it for another purpose, and I'm saying, well, wait a minute, we're taking in school choice kids, and it's costing us X thousands of dollars to educate those kids, and we're getting $5,000, Ari, a student, something like that?
Okay.
So why aren't we taking that money? Because we're spending the money to educate those kids to offset the cost in our, in their budget. So there's other, I'm not gonna get into the, because I went through this budget, you know, pretty detailed, because I'm quite familiar with it, and there's other areas that can be reduced. And I'm saying they can at least, if they take $200,000 in E and D to pay for the Chromebooks, and they take at least 100, maybe 200,000 from school choice funding to reduce our budget, so let's say, let's be conservative and say, okay, we'll ask for $300,000. Well, $300,000 in our particular case is $172,000. It means a lot to us, it really does. So I don't know who's gonna run with this, because I'm out of here in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, but I think, I think what has to happen though is we, we're supposed to, as a select board, give them a number that, you know, so if we say that, you know, we've, here we are, this is what we, you know, we budgeted last year, this is, you know, what we put into our region, we can go 1.5% above that, which equates to whatever it is. I don't know, I just threw that number up, you know, because we're talking 4%. But if we know that, and it's up to the school committee to balance their budget and find that money with, with the administration, I mean, we can certainly provide some suggestions. I mean, I watched that meeting last night, I mean, I heard, you know, what, what they're talking about and, you know, and I, I know that there's, you know, some things that I you know, some things that I had questioned too, because I had been on the school committee for so long. But I think it's up to us to say, well, this is how much we're going to be able to fund.
And how do you get to that number?
Well, that's, I guess that's up to us.
Well, I mean, how do you get to that number? The finance committee hasn't even seen the budget yet.
The school budget.
They have nothing to look at, you know?
I mean, I think what.
And I went last night, because, and Leah went last night. Because I was curious and saying, wait a minute, these numbers don't look right to me, you know?
I mean, I think the, you know, I do think that, I think that their desire to hang on to two million dollars in E and D is unrealistic. They say it got that high because when COVID shut down, they picked up extra money, you know? Now, I would never want to use our free cash to balance our budget. So I know in some ways they look at it the same way, they don't want to use their E and D to, but they can do one time, like we use our free cash for one-time purchases. So I don't know why they can't do something like that, you know? So.
Sure, they've got their own list of capital, don't they?
And they absolutely, you know, can do that, and they talked about that, they. Yeah, and there was, you know, between Rich and Derek Graysa, you know, they came up with a few ideas. It was just a little concerning to me that, you know, they sounded like new ideas for, you know, with these kinds of things. So we really do have to pay attention, because more than anything, I think we have some expertise in this. And if they need our help, then we have to be there to help. But we have to be ready to call out suggestions on how to help them out too. You can't, to your point, we give them a number, but if we're not looking at a realistic budget either, you know, they're talking about taking away a special education teacher to add a special education administrator. It's like, I gotta hear everything that's involved. If we're having this increase in special education students, then why are we taking away a teacher? You know, it just. You know, and there was another thing that they had talked about too, which I wanted to follow up on. You know, we have busing contracts, right? So they were talking about removing a bus. Well, that's great, because if you figure out how much, you know, a bus costs you, let's say it costs fifty-six thousand.
Actually, I think they said it costs close to a hundred thousand dollars per bus.
All right, so maybe it was a long time ago when I was on the school committee. Wow. So if it's a hundred, if it costs us a hundred thousand dollars a bus, and you can't, you say, oh, well, we're just going to remove a bus, and we're going to save a hundred thousand dollars. It doesn't work that way, because in the contract, there's a penalty for removing a bus. So you got to look at that too, and what is the impact it's putting on travel time for the students? Right, and you know what? I'm not looking, yeah, I'm not looking to like, you know, just be calling out errors here, because I, they haven't done a complete bus reroute evaluation in six years. Now, why would you even do that during COVID when you didn't have anyone going to school? You know, so they say they feel better doing it every three years. But we'll see, you know, it'll be telling, but right now, they're looking at eighty percent reimbursement on the buses. Some years, it's only been sixty percent reimbursement on the buses. So, you know, you find twenty thousand dollars in this budget, you don't have to get rid of another bus, so.
May I say something?
Yeah.
So I had an exchange of emails with superintendent today. It's unfortunate that last night, the communications that he and I had had previously were somewhat mischaracterized. You know, I was asked by the district, what were included in our proposed budget? I told them, include our proposed budget. And somehow that was interpreted as like, that's the number they have to be at, and we were happy after that. I never really said that. And even after that happened, I continued to interrogate the process and ask for more information.
No, I know, you've been working with them a lot.
So I had some, and I'm not saying this to be defensive, I'm saying it because I want to get to the punchline. I had several emails in exchange, and the last one I received from him, you know, take this for what it's worth and what you will, but he did say that, you know, we'll have some solid ideas to lower the assessment for regional finance committee. So, you know, I got that late today, I'm going to ask him, try to get some early idea of what that is, and think about doing. He has in the past been fairly open with me about giving me the information. And I think if anything I find out, I'll be happy to pass on to everybody.
Yeah.
I think the first thing to do is, let's get some budgets here for the finance committee.
Yeah, you guys can take a look at it.
I just had another.
Anna Chair, I have a question.
Yeah.
And I know several of us. But I've heard a couple of things about school choice, I think you and I talked about it maybe last year. Help me, and I never knew this till it just came up. Help me understand this, so if a student decides to come from whatever town, I don't want to throw a towel.
So say Taunton.
Taunton comes here. They don't, Taunton doesn't send them with the check that would normally cost to cover that student?
Oh, God, no.
So what's the benefit of us, and why should we express to us to educate our child?
The easiest way to look at it is, so let's say your class size is twenty-three, okay? Let's say, and it's fourth grade, so you're starting, or high school, whatever, okay? They don't start school choice in the middle of the, so it used to be that you go to school choice first grade, fourth grade, sixth grade, ninth grade. There's been some changes to those. This year, they're not accepting anyone in fourth and fifth grade, because the fourth and fifth grade is quite full. So think about it this way, I'm going to use the number twenty-five because it's easier. Let's say the class size has been determined to be twenty-five, okay? So in the sixth grade, there's two classrooms that only have twenty-one in each of the classrooms. It's not enough to consolidate it to one classroom, right? So you take in a couple of school choice kids, so you get some extra money, and you're filling the seat, okay? Also, what you're getting, and this is why I am pro-choice of school choice, is you're getting, you know, when my kids, when our kids were in school, they brought in some great musicians from out of town. They brought in some great athletes that helped our competitive teams. They, you know, there's all kinds of great students that had come to Lakeville, and they, you know, they provide some diversity, because, I mean, our district isn't very, you know, in any of those things. We're limited because of the small amount of kids we have. We had some great athletes, great, you know, kids that participated in all kinds of programs, so it was really nice. But now they've opened it up school-wide, that was when they only accepted them, wasn't it just in the high school when they first started doing it? So now it's a program that spans all the grades, starting at those levels. Plus, we keep those kids until they finish. So if the school committee decides tomorrow there's no more school choice, we maintain those kids until they finish, we don't throw them up. So there is pluses and minuses, but the plus is supposed to be that we have a few extra seats, let's fill them. But also, we have our own kids leaving the district. There's, what do they say, two hundred and sixty-six kids that are leaving the district.
Leaving Lakeville or somewhere else.
Leaving Free Lake to go to other schools. Now, that doesn't include our kids in Lakeville that go to Old Colony, because we're a member school. But it does include kids going, you know, my question's got to be, why do we have so many kids leaving? What are we not offering that maybe?
Does that include private schools or just other public schools?
It's private schools. Is it other Votecs?
Yeah, Bristol Aggies, some of the texts.
Dorf.
Yeah.
Dorf, Dorfuck Aggies now accepted.
Yes, yeah.
So the Aggies, plus, I'm sure the other Votecs.
What did you say, Kay?
Is that number inclusive one through twelve, the two sixty-six?
Yes.
Yeah, I think most of the movement happens in, yeah, high school. But, I mean, that's a lot of kids leaving the district that, you know, so again, we're like, trying to fill some of those seats too, but.
Well, you must be able to tell where they're going.
Oh, yeah, we have that, because we ask the students ahead of time if they're, you know, looking to go outside of the district. We typically know.
So it must be, get some kind of feel with that, the school's doing different than, say, you know, Lakeville or Free Town.
A lot of it folk, though.
I would say, I would guess mostly Votecs, but, well, because.
Oh, private schools, mostly.
Yeah, there's a lot of the private.
Because Old Colonies, they actually turn away as many students as, so those kids that can't get in may be going to Southeast.
Well, right, because now I don't.
They can't go to Southeast.
Oh, BP.
Yeah.
Can't go to BP either.
Really?
No.
How come?
If we, if Old Colony provides that program, then they can't go there.
Even if they get turned down?
Right.
Wow, I didn't know that.
If they don't provide that program, then you can go, or you can apply, not necessarily go, but you can apply.
We also have a private school in town, so that must be, I'm just making a wild assumption, a healthy number.
A few kids probably go there.
Physically stay in town, but are outside of the district.
Yeah, yeah. But to answer your question, the money follows the student. But what, how much that is, I'm not really sure, I don't know if Ari already knows off the top of your head.
Yeah, and it's kind of the old charge of school argument. Because you lose, you're better off as a district, if you get money from a student coming in, you're better off than you would be sending money out. Because, you know, the basic, the basic physics of a classroom, you know, you have a classroom with twenty-five kids, and you lose a kid that goes to a charter school, you have twenty-four kids that have to stay in the classroom. Your cost, your overhead cost is going to be the same. So you'll lose the value of that kid, whether it's chapter seventy money, whatever, but your basic cost will be the same.
And when you get those, you know, that budget information, they did a really good job breaking, you know, the cost per student down. They gave the twenty twenty-one numbers, and that was at fifteen thousand dollars a student. Well, I'm not sure. They didn't have that number calculated, you know, but, I mean, right now, we have two, coming in this year, I think it's two thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven students, sixty-six of those are school choice.
Can we lose how much per school choice student? The difference is six, eight thousand, nine thousand?
Twenty-nine.
So you get five, the cost to educate.
About six-ish. I'm just trying to wrap all my numbers, because these are big numbers. I'm just trying to, I'm on the count, I'm just trying to figure out where the calculations can come from.
Right, and I mean, like I said, I like, I mean, we still have friends from kids that came here that my kids would never have had as friends. You know, so for us, it was a nice thing in our, you know, in our family and my kids growing up to have, you know, people they know from other places, right? Lakeville's a small town. But, and I'm willing to take on some of that cost to get, you know, some diversity going on, but how much is, how much is some?
How much is some? Yeah, I, yeah, school choice kind of baffles me, I mean, we went to school, no one volunteered to go to our school. They were sentenced to our school.
Right.
But, you know, there's the whole concept of, hey, I want to go to school here, it just blows my mind, but, okay.
Different subject, seeing school district. You know, one of the outstanding questions I had from the last regional FinCom was, when they said there was one point two million dollars in salary increases, was, well, how much of that was contractual increases versus new hires? Because, I mean, one point two every year, and that number's going to get higher by some percentage. It's just crazy.
That's a good question, though, right, because I'm not sure how many new students, new professionals they brought home.
They didn't have it that night, so I'm hoping they can find it.
I would send it ahead of time, honestly, if you really want to get it.
Feel free, if you have a question you want to ask ahead of the finance committee meeting, send them to me, I'll send them on to Tom's trust. No problem, so I just touched them just now, but.
Because Ari will calculate all that.
I'll be happy to get it.
Well, there is a breakdown, it says employee salaries, it says FY twenty-four, one million, one hundred eighty-seven thousand and some change, includes step-in schedule increases, collective bargaining finalized, retirements, minimum wage increase, FES preschool teacher, raised guidance counselor, a couple of other things, so. Yeah, so if you want those figures, you can ask them to break that out. And, you know, again, it's a daunting task doing a budget for any school district, never mind a regional school district, but, you know, we did not go up. I mean, we asked our department, Ari taxed them with the chore of, you know, what level services. We are not coming, going to show up with, you know, four and five percent increases, so. And I know Free Town's doing the same. You know, part of the issue going on, like Lorraine said, the towns usually recommend a number, and I think it's just a recommendation, but Free Town hasn't done that for them yet, so, you know, I still feel like they're sort of, don't even know what to aim for maybe, but.
So the two things that I'm proposing, and there's others that can be proposed, okay? Will not affect any staffing level at all, will not affect any new hires that they have in the budget, okay? So easily, without much effect, we can save three hundred thousand dollars, and there's other areas that can be done.
Which is good for this district, but they've got to find a way to absorb that.
Well, there's another problem, which I mentioned in the meeting last night, and I told them, this budget is not sustainable, period, you know? And they got to get it through their thick head that they have to.
Tell us how you really feel, Rich.
You know, I don't know how many times you have to say it to them. And it's the same thing with us, you know? These budgets, and I mean, we talk about Old Colony, and we got a break on Old Colony because they got five hundred thousand dollars in state aid, which meant that our assessment went down by a hundred thousand dollars. We were lucky, you know, from that perspective, but, you know? And then what I would like to see us do, once again, I won't be here, that, you know, to change the, to lower the receipts, to make it better for us for the following year. Don't go and spend this money, just do something to reduce the revenue numbers, you know, to make sure that a little bit of it's protected going into fiscal twenty-five, so. So there was one other item that was discussed at the meeting, having to do with this capacity study.
Oh, yes.
And so forth, and there's a two hundred thousand dollar price tag, okay? To do a study to look at capacity of our schools, you know, to see if we have enough space and so forth and so on. And I tried to point out to them, it was one of the first drafts the superintendent, you know, showed everybody, was that our student population since two thousand and seven was thirty-two hundred students. It's now twenty-seven hundred seventy-seven students, it's gone down by five hundred. And the numbers over the last five years have been pretty, you know, consistent. So if you look at the, in all of our schools, the middle school, intermediate school, you know, the renovations over in Free Town and whatever, they were all in place, with thirty-two hundred students. So how do you explain, you know, you need to do a capacity study for an additional number of students when it's gone down by five hundred students, okay, during that period of time? So.
I mean, they elaborated a little and said that, well, part of this study is finding out what works in buildings, what doesn't, what needs to be fixed. So they're calling it a master plan.
I have no problem with identifying what maintenance and stuff needs to be done for the buildings. But I have a problem putting together a study for capacity study that's saying, well, Assawamset used to hold five hundred and twenty-five students, and now it can only hold, you know, it holds four hundred and twenty-five. That's what we built the middle, the intermediate school for, was that transition period. And that's why the fourth grade has been moved up to the intermediate, into the intermediate school. And there's still fluctuation, you know, to do that based upon the number of students. So I think they just got to look at it and say, well, we have four hundred and something at Assawamset, whatever the number is. But yet the high school used to have a thousand students in it, and we got seven hundred and thirty-two now, okay? And demographics have changed too, you know? Things, we're not having families of four like me, you know? You know, things are changing, you know, that's a fact, but it's happening statewide, it's happening nationwide. But anyway, so anyways, there was a long discussion about that too.
And that two hundred thousand dollars, like, you know, we had mentioned, you know, was for this master plan, but I got to be honest with you, you know, having been on that school committee for twelve years, we did a couple of different reconfigurations, you know, through the years ourselves.
And didn't need to do a two hundred thousand dollar study.
Didn't need to bring somebody in, you know, to do that for us. Our administration worked diligently to try to see with their, you know, professional staff, to see what would work, you know, with the students based on their learning and so forth, so they do have a big.
And I pointed out to them, Lorraine, that we did a study at Assawamset, you know, and that study, and I gave the whole study, which is about a hundred pages, you know, to Ari, that I had at home, that includes everything having to do with improvements that need to be done at Assawamset, and we've made a lot of changes in that. So why would you go and hire somebody else to do the same thing all over again? And that was done by an architect, so anyways. And I also explained to them that anything to do with looking at student enrollments, adding additions, building a new building, needs to go through the select board, for the two towns. They have no authority to tell the towns what needs to be done as far as local elementary schools.
Rich has a lot of great ideas, he's leaving.
Hey, what can I say? Well, I'm sorry.
It's all like, uh.
All right. Uh, no, honestly, you know, if you have questions on that, call Ari, call Rich, Rich, you know, well, he really answers your call.
Anybody wants to borrow my book, they're welcome to it, you know?
You're going to send them out digitally? You want to pick up books?
When, I just, I've been receiving emails with Cara about what I can get from her. Um, I've got, I've got two copies, as long as meant for Brian, he wanted the electronic version, of the, um, of the binders, I can probably scrotter about three of, three of them up in the office, so I can, some minutes, if you want those, um, and, you know, I'm trying to get from Cara.
I can swing by, like I said, I don't even mind it digitally if it's easy, I'm sure I have a binder.
She's got a binder.
It's big.
I love that binder, yeah.
It's a big binder.
Maybe I'll come by and pick up one.
But that, you know, that's expensive to, you know, to put together.
It would be preferable in digital form, honestly.
Yeah, you don't need to, you know.
So let me see, let me, let me find out, forget tomorrow.
Okay, so I'm going to let you close your meeting first.
Would anybody like to make a motion to close the FinCom meeting at 8:31?
Aye.
Cost that, aye.
Give me a second.
Don't, I'm sorry, I can't hear what's happening.
Get a little eager, Larry. All right, uh, all members, four? None? No votes?
No votes, no one wants to go.